Okay, so I'd like to open the meeting of our April 12 city council meeting. In the interest of government government transparency with regards to deliberations and decisions made by the city council and according to open meeting law since this meeting was posted as a zoom meeting. This meeting is recorded by video and audio and will be conducted by remote participation. Additionally, all votes taken by the city council during this and future remote meetings will be by roll call vote. If you're calling in on a phone, you can press star nine to request to speak if you're watching on a computer or device. There is a raised hand button that you can tap or press to request to speak, please use either of these options. During oral communications to be recognized to speak, I'd like to introduce the names of the city counselors that are on the call tonight. In no particular order, council grow council, Majota, council, Memhard, council, Nolan, council, O'Hara, council, O'Neal, council, Worthley, council, Gilman and council gross. We have all nine members of the council in attendance. And I'd like to just introduce members of city staff. First of all, we have Amit Shayana, who is our assistant auditor for the city. We have Joey Encinos, who is our city clerk. We have Krishna Basu, who is our attorney. We have Ryan Knowles, who is our IT director. We have Pamela Toby, who is our newest addition as a our director of constituent and communication services at our mayor Greg Burger. And we have Melissa Gillis, who is our new executive assistant. Mayor's office. And I think that's all of the folks that are on the call representing city staff. So one of the things I just want to note right now is that we do have 18 attendees. And because we had a technical difficulty at the beginning of the meeting with an expired link, but we have remedied that. And the call in number was accurate and we do have 18 attendees. Let me share with counselors what my thought would be so we can discuss this as a group. My, my thought would be is if we have, we have two public hearings scheduled for tonight. One is for two, two, two Main Street. And the second is for an order, an ordinance on street sidewalks and other places. My recommendation to counselors for your without objection is that we will, we can start those matters tonight. But I would suggest that maybe we would consider continuing them in case we missed members of the public that did not continue to try to log on after we changed this. So without objections, counselors, are you come, are you comfortable with that? Provision to make sure that nobody was left being unable to talk because we had a faulty link that we've since fixed. Anyone want to speak to that council grow?
Just why are we going to begin the public hearings? Are we going to, are we going, we're going to open the public hearings, but then continue with them. We're not actually going to engage.
I was thinking of going through the, the, the initial part of the public hearing. And then allowing additional folks to add, so keep it open. So we can allow additional folks at the next meeting in two weeks to continue. So that was my thought. Any other comments? Council gross. I saw your, your, your mouth is moving, but you are on mute. Council gross. Were you talking? Cause your mouth is, I think you're on mute.
I'm talking on my phone to my sister.
Oh, I'm sorry. Any other, any other comments? Is, is anyone objecting to my suggestion? Tracy, council O'Neal?
Yeah, I, I'm not objecting. I just want to make sure I understand that when you open the public meeting tonight, you're going to continue it to the 26th. And on the 26th, you are going to allow people to speak who did not speak two weeks ago.
This is what I was planning to do. If, if there's no objection, I was planning to open the hearings for those two matters tonight. To do the, to, to have the presentation and to allow people to speak in favor or opposition. And then at that point to pause and to continue folks being able to speak in favor or opposition at the next meeting. Because right now we had a technical difficulty. So in other words, we get things moving, but we allow anyone to be able to speak on these two matters at the next meeting. That's my suggestion. Council Memhard.
Just counselor, council president, just a clarification. I'm not sure if Tracy O'Neal is referring to the zoning matter or the other matters that are before us this evening.
The only two matters council that are on the meeting agenda for tonight on the 12th are two, two, two Main Street. And the sidewalk and shoveling council order from counselor O'Hara. The, the zoning one on the amendments has been continued, will be continued when I hit the gavel and continue it to the 26th. And that is posted on the agenda as a continuation.
Thank you for that clarification.
Okay, council grow. You're muted.
I don't know what I'm doing. Help me.
Face isn't there. I mean, your face is there, but it's your photo.
I'm literally melting down. Can we just make sure that we keep a track on who's spoken tonight? So that we're not having double dipping going on.
Yep, we can do that. Anyone else have an objection to this plan? Okay, so before I introduce the first order of business, what I'd like to do is just repeat what I just said. And that is to announce that public hearing 2021 oh, oh, three will be continued until April 26, 2022. And that is the public hearing that we began at our March 22nd meeting on the six zoning amendments. And because our interim director of, of community development is unable to be here tonight. We have agreed to continue that because he is the person that we ask all of our questions to, which is a component of the public hearing. So that is why when I get to that part of the meeting, I'm going to open it and I'm going to continue it. But I'm just telling folks that are on the call that might be there for that reason to know that we will be continuing the discussion of the zoning, the public hearing of the zoning amendments that are in front of us. Okay, so, so first order of business, Madam Clerk.
First order of business is the oral communications.
Thank you. The public shall have the opportunity at every regularly scheduled meeting to be heard on oral communications on matters not appearing on the agenda. Oral communications shall allow any resident who has a request or complaint of any nature relative to city business to appear before the council, state their problem without debate. And the matter shall be referred to the proper agency through the office of the mayor. The resident will be notified within the two week period relative to the disposition of same and a copy shall be forwarded to the city council. Persons speaking under oral communications shall be limited to three minutes each. The council president shall not allow complaints as to individual performance. Is there anyone, we have 24 folks that are, are on the call right now. Is there anyone that would like to speak to the council on matters that aren't on the agenda? I see no hands raised, so seeing none. Next order of business, Madam Clerk.
Next order of business is a presentation from Ryan Knowles, IT director on an update on hybrid meeting logistics for city council and standing committees.
Great, thank you, Ryan. Welcome. Would you reintroduce yourself to everyone? And thanks for being here and we're looking forward to getting an update on hybrid technology for meetings. And thank you for helping us tonight with the technical glitch. We are grateful that you were on the call. So thank you very much. So, Laura, thank you.
Yep. So I'm Ryan Knowles. I'm the IT director for the city of Gloucester. I've probably met most of you at one point or another, if only maybe to pick up your computer. But I, 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 counselor Gilman had, had requested that I, I come and speak tonight to kind of an ongoing matter that has been under consideration for some time, which is hybrid meetings. Done presentations, a kind of a formal presentation with slides in the past and I'm glad to pass that along. I think that probably some of maybe the newer counselors may not have that, so I will gladly pass it along. I don't want to kind of take up too much time by doing the same thing over and over again, but I mean, I think that we, we've come to a place now kind of collectively as a city where we're starting to really having to think, you know, about what happens. I think, you know, specifically the date in mind is July 15th is what do we do on July 15th? When there is the, the order that's making provision for zoom meetings to happen as we are doing now. What, you know, when that expires, it may get extended. I don't know, you know, I think none of us really know the answer to that, but I think as we kind of approach it, we don't want to kind of wait until that point and then say, oh, no, no, what do we do? You know, I think that we want to have a plan in advance. And I think that that's one of the main reasons why council Gilman asked me to come speak to you tonight. Cause I think we want to think collectively about what is our approach? What is our particular? What is our particular kind of path forward? And then how do we best plan for that in a way that isn't going to make anyone from the public feel unduly excluded, but maybe will allow us to get back into in, and something like an in-person meeting, but without kind of issuing the, some of the kind of benefits that we've certainly seen from, from this, this period of zoom meetings where we've been able to see people who maybe have you know, mobility issues who don't feel comfortable going into a big group of people who are out of town, you know, and want to engage in the kind of process of public meetings. How, how do we facilitate that? And how do we make that happen? And I think that, um, that's, that's what I'm here to discuss tonight. I can go into more specifics, but I just want to kind of set that forth as a preamble and make myself available to answer questions specifically about where, where do we go from here? And what is our plan? You know, I'm, I'm here as a resource. I, I, you know, obviously serve at the pleasure of the mayor and I, you know, take, take my directives ultimately from the city administration, but I think that we want to work collaboratively and we want to have a, we want to have a discussion or we want to have a, a plan that, that works for everyone. So, um, that's, that, that's kind of the, the preamble and obviously want to make myself available for, for questions, concerns, comments, thoughts, talk through it.
Okay, thank you, Ryan. And I have two questions that I love our attorney Krishna Basu to cover. One is regarding the possibility of using some type of venue that isn't owned by the city. And the second is a clarification of the requirements of using a a space that is, can accommodate all the members of the public that wishes to be in attendance. So if you could elaborate on those two matters that I had asked you to research for us, that would be terrific. Thank you.
Of course. Thank you, Council Gilman. Good evening. So I did, I did look into both of those issues and also reached out to the Attorney General's Office of Open Government to confirm. So basically with respect to the first issue, it is fine for the city to use a non-city owned building. Sort of the usual requirements that would apply to any location where a public meeting is held is that it has to be open and accessible to the public as far as, you know, accessible to anyone who would like to attend the meeting. And the only thing that they added was that it should be in a reasonable location, not more than 30 miles away. And I don't think that there's anything that we're considering that would fall into that category. So that it, you know, it would be fine to use a private location as long as it's accessible to everyone. And with respect to the other issue, the open meeting law states that again, it has to be, every meeting has to be open and accessible to the public, whether it be a physical in-person meeting or a remote meeting, you know, it has to be someplace or remotely so that anyone can attend that would like to. And so, you know, the, the program that we're using tonight, for example, meets those requirements because the public has access to it. They can see and hear and participate in it. If the city were to switch and have them in person, then again, we need to just make sure that we use a room or a location that anyone who that reasonably wouldn't be able to accommodate anyone who would like to attend the meeting. And so you can't have a room that's very small for a public meeting that people would be, you know, not be able to attend if they wanted to. So, and if we get into the hybrid situation, we have to actually meet both of those requirements. That's one of the things that I looked into with the Attorney General's Office. And so we couldn't have a small location and say, you know, it could only hold 10 people that wanted to come in public, but as many people as wanted to could participate remotely, both have to be open to anyone who wants to attend.
Okay, thank you. Um, so Ryan, could you give us like a five minute overview of the different venues that you have looked into right now? And realizing that city council would need to accommodate a large amount of possible people that would come. You know, the, the locations that we have been chatting with you about over the last few months, six months include Kairos when the technology is upgraded. And then of course Gloucester High Library and O'Malley Learning Commons. So can we start with those three venues? Cause we're pretty comfortable with the size possibilities in those three venues. And then we can talk a little bit more about standing committees.
So I mean, you know, anything that was going to happen in the school would have to happen as part of, you know, in conjunction with school administration. I mean, I think to step back for just one second, I mean, I think I'd be interested to actually in hearing some more from Krishna in particular about, cause I think that the initial plan was to try to take this in a kind of stepwise fashion and to start with having potentially just doing it similar to like the school committee does it now where the members of the committee are in person, but you know, but they're the kind of, the, the public isn't, isn't physically there. And it seemed like from the presentation that you had passed around Val that the, it was, I think from KP Law or something that they said that that was an option to, to do it that way. And I, I, you know, I know that that, that may not be a, the everybody's first choice, but I, I'm, but I, I know that there is some you know, that there's some concern, I think on the part of the administration as well as myself, just from a staffing perspective and from a technical perspective, that the hardware and the software is certainly there and available. And that's not really the problem, but I think the issue is more the, the operational and process related complications that, that I think come along with trying to have your, because you're essentially running two meetings at the same time simultaneously. You have to start a zoom meeting. You have to start an in-person meeting. You have to monitor a zoom meeting. You have to monitor an in-person meeting. If you have people physically present. Whereas, you know, the school, with the school committee, for example, everyone's from the committee is sitting there kind of round table style. And so that you're able to kind of have that cross talk that maybe you don't have in the same way when you're all kind of on a individual monitor, but, but I think that you, but you know, you, but the, the public isn't currently there, I think, as far as I understand from the, with the school committee. So I, I, I think that in terms of stepwise motion and having it be something that's realistic in terms of our actual capabilities as a city, I, I, I think that there's, I, I would, I'm also willing to hear more from Krishna, you know, in terms of whether that would be a permitted configuration.
Sure, I'd be happy to speak to that.
If not, you should probably tell the school committee.
No, that, that is completely acceptable with an open meeting law guidelines to do it in that, in that manner to have the public body be in person and to have the public participate remotely. As long as, as I said, everyone can participate remotely who wants to, which, you know, using the program that we're using tonight. That would, that would definitely qualify in our open meeting law.
So I guess we should open this up for comments from counselors. Sorry, my dog is scratching at the door. Because the, you know, this is a kind of a little bit heading in a different direction than I had initially hoped based on our conversations last fall and even in this term. So I'll, I'll open up this conversation. Council grow, you'd like to, to speak and then council worthily. I saw your hand.
Yeah, I'm Ryan. My recollection is that we talked at some point about the cost of renovating the technology in Kairos being around $80,000. What's preventing us from moving back to Kairos sort of as our first choice? I think the idea of doing city council meetings in the library is very unwieldy, given the size and the, and the way that that's you know, a lot, lot fewer people attend school committee meetings. You know, we could do the, the auditorium perhaps, but you know, if we really want to have 30 to 50 people that are showing up on a regular basis on our zoom call meetings, showing up at city hall and, and being able to, to facilitate that. I really think that we should be focusing on getting back in to city hall, which is our home as a council. And it's really the city's home in terms of the public. And I think that I'd, I'd like to know why, what, what's preventing us from moving forward on that in a, in a more expeditious manner?
I mean, I think that my, my, I mean, my opinion as an IT professional is that it would be a waste of $80,000. And it would probably be more now, you know, with supply chain issues and the cost of everything going up. That was last year about this time that it was quoted 80,000. So I guess based on current issues, it'd probably be a little bit over 100. And the, the reason I say, you know, quote unquote, a waste of 80,000 or $100,000 is because what I think what we'd essentially do is we would install a whole bunch of equipment. We would pay for the installation. We would pay for what would end up having to be a very careful installation. And because you can't really do construction in Kairos specifically, you know, because of the historical kind of strictures of the building. You put it all in, we would have a lot of visible wiring because we couldn't really hide things behind, you know, behind any walls or anything like that. And then what we would do at, if we wanted to do any kind of actual renovation at some point, which should city hall desperately needs to really be you know, used in a, in a way that I think would actually be have resemble reliable signal and such in the space. We would have to tear it all out and then pay money to put it all back in. So I mean,
If I could interject, I, I think it's, at least it's my hope that we would continue on with a hybrid brand of, of meetings on into the future. I think it's created a situation where there's far more community input. There's people who are able to attend meetings on zoom that previously were, were unable to, not just because of physical issues. You've got, you know, counselor Majota's got two very small kids. His likelihood of necessarily participate, three, sorry, I apologize. And being able to participate is, is heightened by the fact that they can, people can tune in for the part of the meeting that they need to not have to go downtown and do the meeting. But I think ultimately we as a council expect to be in Kairos, doing our jobs at some point. But we, we need to look at this as a, as a permanent solution, not as a temporary stopgap until, until July or whatever the next few months. I think we need to be looking at this as Kairos is our home. We will have hybrid meetings into the future. What's going to get us to that point? And maybe at this point, if there's exposed wires, I can deal with that. You know, I understand your concern about putting in a whole system and then having to rip it out at, at, in, in, in near future, but given the pace at which we do things like renovations of city hall. I feel like we've got a good few years before anything meaningful is going to happen. And in, in that meantime, we should be doing hybrid meetings for, for as many, as many meetings as we can. That's just my position. So.
Well, so thank you. And I, council worthly, and I also wanted to note that Mayor Verga had his hand raised. So me, I, I would like to, to ask Mayor Verga to, to speak first and then we'll go to council worthly.
Right. So it's not as far off as you think, Jason, the, the renovation. They're looking to, they, City Hall Restoration Commission is looking to do fire suppression and wiring for the building. Because of a lot of activity that's going on next year because of our 400th anniversary and the library, the police station and the YMCA. We've asked the commission to sort of push off that project, but it will be started sooner rather than later. And the fact is, even if we put in those wires in the hanging, that's a lot of labor and a lot of dollars for a short-term solution. I, I agree that going forward, the option for zoom coverage has to exist, whether it's just for the purposes of streaming and recording or to have people who want to participate remotely. But I, I would urge you guys, I talked to the council president about this earlier, you know, to, to look at this as a phased approach. And it may be good to start to meet in purpose, sorry, in person, all of the school committee, just for the sake of you guys to have a chance to see each other in person and build better rapport with one another. But I, I don't want to see the hybrid thing disappear or the zoom thing disappear, but it has to be well thought out. And Kairos, in addition to just running wires, we're dealing with acoustic issues. I mean, the place was designed for, you know, 19th century orators to just yell from the stage. You know, amplification just bounces all over the place in there. So it's a lot more than just running up some routers and some wires. And slap in a couple of TV monitors. It's also a lot of sound proofing and things like that. So just throwing it out, the, the administration is fully in support of continuing the zoom aspect. But I think it's going to have to be a phased approach. And it might be a good idea to, like I said, start one of the other three or four locations that are already set up for hybrid to start the, the mix of the board in person and then the public remote. But just, just my thoughts.
Thank you, Mayor. Council Worthley, your hand was up. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam President. So firstly, I want to concur with counselor grow. We disagree at times, but when we agree, he should know that too. We should be getting back to Kairos as soon as possible. Kairos Auditorium, if it's not there, we should have a process in place to be in a public and, and hybrid setting. I'm deeply concerned about one thing. So firstly, I think Ryan, you know, I'm a big fan of yours as well as Krishna. I'm a big fan of yours as well. We had this conversation at the end of January. I think Mayor Verga, you were there and you know, free cash. And I think Council Gilman said, maybe we can use some of that cash for renovating city hall for this purpose. That was January with three months away. What I'm feeling just personally is that there's a void of direction right now. That's not meant as insult to anybody. But Ryan, you said you work at the will of the mayor. I respect that. The mayor is obviously trying to be helpful to us. But we're two months away from the governor's deadline. And we're no further ahead in terms of a outline of a plan. And I want to be resourceful and offer whatever help I can provide in the council as well. I don't, today was supposed to be an update of this process, but I feel like we're still in the brainstorming phase and we're not looking at an action plan. A request for funding. Whatever it might be to get us to the next step. And it's the middle of April and we've been, we have been in very involved in the zoning changes and those aren't finished. We have our budget process coming up, so we're going to be, there's going to be a lot of demand on our time as a council. And I want to just make sure that we're not at July 15th, praying the governor continues this. And then we have in-person meetings and unknown location at this point without public input from hybrid. I'm concerned. And so you don't have an answer, but can we have some confidence in a process? What is the next step?
Okay, thank you, counselor. More hands from the city council, please. Any, any comments from any other members of the city council?
I can, I mean, I, I'm, I'm also glad to answer what, what council worthly said, because I, I want to emphasize that, that I, I have the hardware that is necessary to do this. I have the ability to put it all in place. I, I'm, I will say it plainly, it's not going to happen in Kairos by July. Even if we started the process of, even if we said full steam ahead, here's every penny that you need. Let's start renovations. The, for example, Rockport put in an order for this system a year and a half ago, and it is not finished. They don't have half of the components that they need. So even if we had started it a year ago and we did this, we still would be in the same place because it's the same components that they don't have that we wouldn't have. So I mean, I'll, you know, so it's, it's not going to happen in Kairos. And I think by July, I mean, I think that, that unless you want, unless you don't want to be hybrid, you know, at the end. And I, what I'm hearing from you is that is not something that you want. And I think what you would like is a hybrid solution and you would like something that's going to functionally work for all of you. And I think what the way that I see myself as fitting into that is by facilitating that via hard. Is by facilitating that via hardware, via the training that's necessary, via personnel and staffing if needed. But I, but I also want to be reasonable about my own staff's time. You know, I think that, you know, I think that, that a hybrid solution, for example, is, is one that, as I said, it, it has a lot of moving pieces. And it has more moving pieces than I think sometimes get recognized. It has audio coming in, audio going out. You have to have the ability to hear if someone is in person, you have to have the ability that people, for people who are on Zoom to hear the person who is standing there at a podium. And microphone. They have to have be able to hear it on Zoom and vice versa. You have to have, you know, so you, and whoever's running that meeting is, is really turns into, I think, a lot more of a, a real ringleader. You really have to be on, you have to be paying attention, you know, you have to be able to say who's raising a hand, who isn't. So I mean, I think that I, I want to recognize that as well. And, and I think that that's why. When Mayor Verga talks a lot about a kind of phased approach, I think that this is a really smart idea. And I think that when I talk, I think. When I presented the notion of, and when he presented the notion as well as moving toward. A, a stepwise model and saying that you are all in person, maybe the public is not there tomorrow or by the next meeting. That I think that, that, that allows us to say, okay, what did that feel like? How did, how did that feel? Were there hiccups? Were there pieces that, that broke there before we just say, okay, time to, you know, release the floodgates? Let's move forward. Let's, you know, have the public and the, and people in Zoom and people, you know, and maybe have the council. You know, if, if Counselor Marjota's got to be home, you know, he's at home and four of the counselors are there in person, you know, I mean, I just, you know, you think about. The, the kind of complications there and they could be manifold. And I think that, you know, I, I just think about, do I have a staff of three plus myself? And, you know, I have someone who is on call twenty-four seven for the fire department and police department. But that, that person also, you know, has expectations of things like comp time if they're called on outside of those hours. That it's worked into their kind of employment contract. So to, to go and start saying, well, we're going to have to comp them fourteen hours this week for all the. For six different meetings that needed them to come drive around the city, you know, we're talking about, they're not going to be there half the week. So.
So seeing that no other counselor has raised their hand, so let me just speak to this just for a second. Okay, great. Thank you. Go ahead.
I, I, I just wanted to follow up on both what Ryan has said, but also Mayor Verga. I think Jason and the rest of us need to appreciate that there's a long-term plan for the restoration of City Hall, which is in progress right now. It's going to take a while and we, we don't want to spin our wheels and expend an, an investment in City Hall's Kyrus Auditorium when in fact. A larger renovation project that is unfolding there that we want to be a part of long-term. I, I'd really like to pursue the opportunity for other municipal spaces that will function for us, whether it's the Sawyer Free Library's friend room. Or the Harbor Masters Office or school, school, school property, the, the library or O'Malley at the high school, library. As the next baby step along this process, because I think there are city spaces available for us. That could be used as they are currently for hybrid meetings without wasting money on Kyrus. In the short term, but allowing us to come together with adequate provision for space for the public in whatever number is appropriate. Either virtually or in person.
Council member, let me just speak to your comments because I agree with most of them, but the, the one issue that I don't agree with. Is we have to be very mindful of the size of the venue. So the law requires us to be able to accommodate. Whomever wants to be at a meeting. So if we were to scale down and say, let's try the Harbor Masters Room or the Soy Free Library Room. We would not be able to accommodate. Twenty-five to seventy-five members of the public that might wish to attend, whereas.
I mean, Ryan went through these numbers very carefully. He's done a survey of each space. So I understand that the Sawyer Free Library Friend Room has a, a, a capacity of seventy or thereabouts. Just as an example.
That point from the law is that if we are to use a public venue, it has to be large enough to accommodate. Whomever wants to attend. So that's why we were talking mostly about. As an alternative to Kyrus, understanding that it could be stalled because of the techno, technology challenges. That either Gloucester High School, Library or the O'Malley Learning Commons would be large enough to accommodate. The types of folks that might want to be members of the public and be able to attend to hear our meetings as an alternative. To also being able to pick up the phone and zoom in. So that, those are the challenges that we have to that. Possibly Soy Free is large enough. But what happens if we have a big, a public hearing or two and then people can't fit in that room? Then we've, we have a glitch, whereas we know that those other spaces could accommodate. I mean, maybe those. Maybe those alternatives would be okay for a standing committee meeting if, if in fact the acoustics. And all the setups is excellent for a hybrid meeting of, of both components. So that's, so that's my, that's my biggest concern about those other options. Maybe Soy Free is large enough. I, I don't, I don't know. So Counselor Majota, you had your hand raised. Thank you.
Yes, so I just, you know, what's the rush? To get to this in person, I guess is my, one of my questions. And, you know, spending eighty to a hundred thousand dollars for wine for, you know. Two to three years and then redoing it, I think that's just a waste of taxpayers' dollars. And I believe the Zoom is very beneficial to all of us. I think that we're all able to. You know, attend a meeting wherever we are. And so can any of the attendees, if it is someone who lives in Florida. You know, during the zoning talks, they were able to sort of participate. So I just hate to rush into something unless we have a, like a really good plan. Where the Zoom right now is, is really benefiting the city and we are able to communicate, which is great. I think that, you know, the in-person would allow the counselors to get to know each other a little bit more. But I just, I'm a huge favor of the Zoom. It's benefiting me tonight. I have a sick child, unfortunately. And I just hate to waste, where we, we say eighty thousand dollars, but in reality, it's going to be a hundred thousand dollars. And then to redo it, it's going to be more. So that's just about, that's it.
So Council Gross.
Yeah, so this is over in July, correct? I think this may be a question for Greg and Jill. We don't know when it's over. What is the plan? For the other boards, Planning Board, for instance, it has seven members. Are you guys planning for their in-person meetings that have to be able to accommodate both? Either a hybrid or straight public attendance that may be large? What are your guys' thoughts on that?
Yes, you're absolutely right. Those boards, it's not just them. It's right down to the cemetery committee, you know. They're all looking to be meeting in person.
Can meet in smaller venues.
And some committees, yes, you're right. So that's why we need to be thinking of what the options are. I mean, with the Planning Board. Under most circumstances, work in a place that holds seventy people, probably. When they start talking about something that's at the level of controversial, controversial level is what they just went through. Probably going to need a lot more space than that. So we have a lot to think about. The other alternative is we say. Sorry, we're just going to go on Kyrus and it's not going to be beamed out to the world, you know, we're, we're going to have to do what we'll have to do. I, I guess. In the perfect world, we have the, the venues that the boards, commissions, you guys have always used. And have the right technology to do it, but it's not going to be quick or easy.
Yeah, thanks. So I think that we can sort of. You know, all get lumped in together to whatever solutions we're thinking about. We're not on an island here coming up with this on my own is really the point I'm trying to. Come to. But also during, you know, this large amount of communications we got and stuff, I did hear from people who. Didn't have internet. I know they have their phone. Most of them are older. Using their phone for Zoom can be a problem. So I'm a little concerned about the. The hybrid of just the, the council or committee or board members being there and their presenters. And not members of the public. And I understand the logistical problem that Ryan was talking about that where you have to. If you're running, now you're going to be running an in-person platform, let's say, and the Zoom platform at the same time. You have to have people and there's going to be a considerable cost to go with that. So these are all just things that I've been thinking about. Don't have any answers to them. But just, but I know that there's people who, who felt left out and, you know, we noticed that in the schools too, kids who didn't have. You know, technology or even internet at home. So that's another whole component that we have to think about for those citizens. That's all. Thanks.
Any other comments from counselors? Council Neil, you haven't spoken.
Yeah, I, I do have people asking for the in-person meetings, but I truly believe we need hybrid. And I'm, I'm sure that, Ryan, I'm sure you did check this out, but the auditorium at high school, would that be logical? Would that be too big or?
So I mean, any, just, I mean, just also clarify, any school space, there, there probably be a, a large number of school spaces that would work in, in theory. That, the, the only issue with, with, you know, quote unquote hybrid is you have to have a screen of some sort that everybody can see. That or then as well as audio broadcast so that if someone's calling in via Zoom to say, I have a public comment, you know, whatever. That, that everyone in the room, because I think that that's probably a requirement, you know, that, that Krishna could probably uphold that, that if. That way they can't just be like on someone's laptop and someone's like, oh, no one else can hear this, but this is what they're saying. Maybe that'd be okay, but I feel like that'd be a little hokey. You know, we'd want to be in a space where the audio would be decent enough so that someone calling in, everyone sitting there could say, oh, I hear what they're saying. You know, they're, they're making a really important point about, you know, whatever it is, some, about some, some issue that, that they believe is really important. And I think that the, the capability of doing that and like the auditorium, it's might be possible. But again, then you're talking about having to pipe the audio through the sound system, the auditorium, and who does that is responsible for it. You know, who's responsible for turning the audio system on? There's a problem, who do you call? You know, and so, and then when we're, you know, so again, when we're talking about school spaces. Council Gilman, I think that, I think that those would work fine. But again, then we're talking about the school IT department. That's the, I, the school IT department is not the same as in cities. I mean, they, you know, we work together, but, you know, that's headed up by Grant Harris. And they have their own kind of processes for those spaces and I work with them to make those work. But, but in the end, you know, support for this, I, I don't, I can't do anything with, you know, the school's wifi if it's not working correctly. That would be something that the school's IT department would have to handle. So that's something to just keep in mind relative to school spaces.
Okay. Any other counselors, Council Worthley, I saw your hand raised. Go ahead.
Thank you. It seems to me that there isn't a process to make this decision. Is it a council decision? Is it administration decision? Is it your decision? And I don't know if you need some direction because I'm not feeling like you're being asked a specific thing to work on. This is my opinion, but I would say, can you come back to us with a list of locations that A, have enough space for the public to attend? B, have the right technology to do what we need to do, which I think is a combo hybrid and the public can come in person. And then we'll get a list and we'll then work through that. And then the third piece is if the technology isn't there, what would it cost to get us there? Because we're, we're two months away. That's a lot to pull together, but I don't feel like someone's asked.
It's, it's already together and I'll send it to you in the.
Ryan did present that at our last meeting, the end of January, I believe. It was every location. And, and if it was. Compatible to hybrid and how many people it would hold. So maybe you could resend us those slides. So, so, so let me, let me speak to that right now. So I go back to last year and the last council. And we voted twice that we wanted to commit to having both in-person. Open to the public as well as hybrid. And that was really important to us. And we've had several presentations to get us there. And I, I understand that Kyrus might be on hold right now. It's unfortunate, but I understand. And we had talked pretty clearly about Gloucester High Library. That's where the school committee has their meetings right now. And, and or the learning commons as, as possible alternatives for our public meetings. Where we would allow the public to attend. We can accommodate members of the public per the law. And also to integrate hybrid. So one of my thoughts right now in terms of a plan. Is that working with our IT director and administration. I'd like to put my neck out there to say, I would like to see us strive to do that. And maybe by the May meeting, May tenth, we could try a meeting at Gloucester High in person. And allow the public to zoom in and then see if we could get to the next step of technology before July. Fifteenth in order to both have our meetings there as well as the. The public and hybrid technology, which will take some work on our part. Because we're going to have to get approval from the school committee and the school superintendent to use that venue. But I, I just think that we want to get to yes here and I understand. I understand that we have all the other boards and commissions, but. I think our, our obligation right now is for the city council to be able to take a leadership role. We've made the commitment. That we wanted to get here. So I'd like to see us heading in that direction. So that would be my suggestion from a process. And I spoke briefly to Mayor Verga this afternoon about that possibility. And, you know, he, he seemed to be okay with a initial meeting of us in person at the high school. If we can arrange for that. And then with, with the Zoom happening for that with the public. And then we can get to the next step of how we can integrate the public into that once we can figure out the Zoom. But it will take a joint effort between, as Ryan has said, between working with Grant Harris. Who's the IT director for the schools and a partnership with the, the city's IT director, Ryan. Who has done a great job trying to support us and our needs and doing all this research. So that's my short-term thought. But I, I need, I need to hear from counselors, Council Grow.
Make sure, I just wanted to, to clarify that my, my initial comments really had to do with the fact that we're facing the seven fifteen deadline. As someone who actually doesn't like to leave his house ever, I'm perfectly happy doing hybrid forever. And, and I mean, it's not that I don't want to hang out with you guys, but I feel like I'm much more productive when I'm doing this meetings at home. So I, I'm curious to see if, if the extension will happen at some point. I do understand that we're going to have to go to hybrid at some point. And, or we, we're going to have to go in person at some point, which is fine. But, you know, I, I just didn't want to make it sound like I was being like, we have to go Kyrus all or nothing. I'm just feeling like long-term, we're going to have to have a, a solution that's going to carry us into years in the future. Obviously, until we, until we have that sorted out, I'm, I'm content to go with whatever the rest of the council wants to do. As long as it means I don't have to leave my house.
Council Nolan.
It's inevitable that we're going to end up being meeting again. There's no doubt in person. The hybrid is a great model. I think that if we're going to rush things to meet as counselors only. Where we don't have the situation where public can be involved at this time, I think maybe our start. In trial era on this should definitely be in a room that the city Gloucester IT director. Has control of such as the. The Harbor Masters Office. I think if we want to try this by March tenth or May tenth, sorry. We want to make sure that Ryan's in charge, that our personnel's in charge, that we're not taxing other school. Areas to come in and be there in support of this. I feel as well with Jason, I'd soon be home until we can. I feel as well with Jason, I'd, I'd soon be home until we can all be open to the public. Um, but if we want to do a, a, a date where it's just our, our council and. The members of the clerk's office and administration. We should do it in the area that's not controlled by the school department, that's not taxing their funds or their overtime. And work on our own properties.
But that would be with, with Zoom technology for the members of the public, Counselor.
That, that exactly, but that would be not going to the high school, not worrying about Grant Harris, not worrying about. Uh, janitors from their department and intermingling with ours. Um, it'd be, you know, me in as a group of people and, and doing what we do best. Uh, so if, if we have to do it where people want to get together and just be seeing each other's face to face. We should do it in an area that's common with our own IT department. And then move on from there and how best aside, when we start involving people coming into the, from the public.
Brian, what, what is the um, the city oversight venue that could best accommodate a crowd of seventy people? For example, members of the public.
Yeah, I mean, I think, you know, I think probably be the friend room and, you know, it'd be a little tight, but. Um, you know, that would probably be the best kind of option in terms of a room that is a space that is fully. You know, even though it's in the library, honestly, but you know, we, we do all the IT for the library as well. So I mean, you know, we have control over their wifi and we know what. What to plug and where so that, um, I think that, that, that would be a good, um. That, I mean, that, that, that might, when you're talking about even just from May 10th, that might be a consideration there. I mean, I think. Um, you know, I think that that has the capacity to have a substantial number of people there and, you know, I mean, I. The, you know, it's, I, again, the. When you, you know, there's, I, I feel like there, there is, there is some. Some, I'm not a legal scholar by any means, but I mean, you know, I, there's how many residents other than adult residents that might want to attend a meeting in Gloucester? And you have to have a space that could potentially fit them all, because that Kairos doesn't work either, but you know, which is obviously getting a little ridiculous, because not. You know, fifteen thousand people aren't going to show up to a meeting probably, but this is about dogs on the beach, but um. But I think, uh, but um, but you know, I think that, you know, I think that we, that, that could be a, a, a nice space to try. You know, initially they have the, all of the equipment is already currently there. They have a screen there. They have a, a wide angle camera that can work. Um. If, and you know, my, my department can be, you know, we, we probably would be available in person, probably myself or someone. Um, else would be available in person on the night of, you know, to make sure that it went off well. But again, I think that if we. Think about that stepwise and we take that step, you know, as, as Counselor Worthley said, I think that, that, you know, I think that that gives us. That gives us a chance to say, again, I, I, I'm, I'm a firm believer in wanting to display the excellence and the good work. That people who work for the city do. Um, and I don't, I don't want this to fail or flop and, you know, and I, I think that, you know, because I don't want this to be another thing that. You know, that people look at and say they're the, you know. Everything was working fine with the Zooms and then they had to go do this other thing and it was an abject failure and. You know, look how silly we all look. Um, I would like this to be something that people look at and say. Um, is it, wasn't this great work that, that everyone came together to accomplish and reflects the excellence that I think that. The people who work for the city, the people who devote their time as volunteers or as um, council elected officials. I think that although, I think that, that I want, this is, that's what I wanted to reflect and that's ultimately what I want out of this is for it to succeed. And for it to be um, as seamless as possible so that we're not like running around with, you know, like our hair is on fire every Tuesday night.
That's great. So um, go ahead, um, Council Worthley, and then let's see if we can close this, go ahead.
Ryan, thank you for that. I just want to ask you either now or in the near future, if you could tell us how we can help you as a council. Just let us know, because if we don't know, we can't. That's all. Thank you.
So um, oh, so by the way, our CFO, uh, John Dunn has um.
Yeah, I, I got, I got something.
Okay, go ahead, um, Council Gross.
Are you not seeing the raised hands?
Um, I was just looking at Ryan making eye contact with him. And then I, and then I looked at the whole screen, so go ahead.
So I, I just, just to clear, I'm, I'm in agreement with um, with Counselor Nolan's. Uh, statement about the, it should be on city property because um. You know, the, the school IT department is stretched uh, to um, about as thin as they can get. And, and I wouldn't want to add any more of a burden to them that we would, that would absolutely have to happen in the first, you know. First few meetings anyway. But my question also is, are we talking about? We and our, and the presenters are the only people in attendance at these meetings? Is that what we're talking about right now? Right now, I mean, for the May 10th, for May 10th.
So the first meeting would be just us in the meeting and everyone else would be zoomed in. All the members of the public, all the panelists that are not part of our council. And that would be our first trial to see how that works. And then we would assess that. And determine what the next step is. Are we ready? To open it up for the June meeting, for example, to then become a meeting. That possibly the public could join us as well as a Zoom technology. So kind of taking a little bit of a trial and error to see how it's feeling and then assess it. Maybe we can put this as a standing um, item on our agenda, just to kind of assess how it went. And then determine what the next step is, because I, I, I think that, you know, we have to be. We have to be sensitive to the technology challenges and to some of the. Um, the fact that the city also has to be looking at boards and commissions and figuring out how this is all going to work. But I think it would be fair if we could just try this out and do like a baby step and see how it works. And that's my, um, my.
Well, my two cents is that, you know, city property and the friend room is probably the place and there is. You know, there's room for spillover at the friend room too. Um, so that's, that's my two cents, that's it.
Right. So um, do, do we want to, um, do you want to make a vote? I mean, I could, I could move that. The city council request to the mayor to um, seek permission for. The city council to use the um, friend room at Soy Free Library as a trial onsite. Venue for a city council meeting. With the integration of Zoom technology for all additional members that are not on the council and I so move. Okay, I've got a second from Council Memard. It was tied by Council Nolan. Um, so is there a discussion before we vote? Go ahead. Um, our city clerk, Joe Ancinos has her hand raised.
I just wanted to make you aware that Counselor O'Hara had his hand up.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay. So if he wanted to.
Um, Jamie, do you want to speak to this um, motion or do you want to say something before we discuss the motion?
Yes, prior to.
Okay, so um, without objection, counselors, I'm going backwards to before the um, the motion. Go ahead, Counsel O'Hara.
First, thank you very much, Joanne, for pointing my uh, my request to speak. Um, I, I must agree with um, Counselor uh, Gross and, and uh. Counselor Grow. Um, Counselor Grow points out the, the, the fact that um. You know, the, the comfort level as being a city counselor, you know, going into my fourth term. Um, seven years, the participation we've seen in, in these uh, meetings. Um, online has been tremendous. I can recall very well. How many people participated in the meetings in the live uh, format at Kairos. Um, winters brought very few due to the cold, summers. The heat in Kairos just overwhelming, no one showed up. Uh, so I, a, a, as has been spoken, what's the hurry? We are seeing tremendous participation. Obviously, we're never going to please everyone. There's always going to be someone who wants to. You know, speak out in public, but I, I think the reality is we are doing extremely well for our citizens. Um, you can see here it is, uh, we're an hour and ten minutes. Into uh, the meeting and we really even haven't even touched the agenda. Our meetings are going on much longer. We have a lot on the agenda. That's nothing to do with, with us as, as a council. But um, I, again, uh, Council, Counselor Grow, um, you know, is just spoke so well. Um, on, on the, the, the comfort level and I, I think from, you know, speaking with constituents. Uh, they enjoy having the ability to participate from, from their homes. Uh, so with that said, uh, to Counselor Gross, uh, the, the um. Keeping these, these meetings, if we do, uh, whether the harbor masters. Location or um, Soy Free, obviously Soy Free has the ability for parking and what have you. But, but again, um, I'm, I must say, well, what's the hurry? But I, I do agree that. You know, we have to start someplace and a trial um, would be a nice thing. Uh, the question I have is with that trial, would we also have the council? Being hybrid as uh, you know, one of us, whether it's, any of us could be out of town. Dealing as Council Majota, dealing with his children, uh, would that also be an option? Thank you.
So we have a provision that we approved, uh, probably eleven or twelve years ago, allowing remote access. For particular reasons, which is still covered um, under this provision. So um. I don't know Attorney Bezo, if you want to comment on that, but, but we have a provision where that is allowable. Provided you do roll calls and there are certain amount of technical requirements. Um, to the coverage, but that is allowable. There was a member that wasn't able to attend because of sickness. Um, but I think the majority of us, this would be a commitment to be getting back in person. Um, but there is that provision. Does that, am I correct, Prisna for um, on, on that?
Yes, I believe that there were, as you mentioned, um, you know, uh. Provisions in effect for if a council member could not be here, such as um, you know, the roll call and those sorts of um, that. That checklist, if you will. And so I think that we could, you know, continue to enforce that. What the, what the remote meeting um. Option did was to kind of um, have that apply to everybody and to sort of change things during the pandemic, but I think we could still go back to those.
Okay, thank you. So let's go back to the motion on the table right now. The motion was to ask. I'll just elaborate a little bit, it to ask per the mayor. Um, to seek permission for the city council to use the friend um, room at Soy Free Library. For a trial, May 10th. In-person meeting of just the city council with the integration of hybrid technology for any. Other panelists other than the counselor, council and the public. And um, we had a second of the motion by Council Memard. So is there um, further discussion on the motion? Um, Council Worthley.
Yes, first, I'm going to support the motion. Um, I think it's helpful to have a deadline, a goal and some settings, some uh. Parameters here, but I also want to add, uh, at least the thought, we need to account for what it would take from the city clerk's office as well. To manage the in-person meeting and the hybrid portion of it. I just want to ask Ryan if you could also work collaboratively with the clerk's office, because we might need to budget for that. If there's additional staff time necessary. So I support the motion. I just want to add the comment that. We need to be able to support our city clerk's office um, in whatever.
Um, any further discussion, Council Grow?
The only thing I would caution is that we have um, some very um. Uh, contentious discussions coming up in the next couple of public hearings and there's going to be a fair amount of public involvement. I'm wondering, you know, both the twenty-sixth and the tenth, if those are the best time to initiate an experiment with. Us in person and people on, on hybrid, because I think we're going to have a lot of participation in terms of those public hearings and I'm wondering if. If maybe the twenty-fourth might be a better option. Though I will say upfront, I'm not going to be at the twenty-fourth meeting. Uh, I'll be out of town. I could personally, I'd be happy to be remote, but I won't be here in town. But I'm just concerned about doing an experiment. For the council on a public hearing night that is going to have probably a lot of people participating.
Would you like to amend the motion to um, to target the May?
I would, I would move to amend to the twenty-fourth.
Okay, we have a motion by Council Grow. We've got a seconded by Council Nolan to amend our motion. Um, is there a discussion on the amendment? Okay, let's do a roll call vote. Counselor O'Neil, you're first tonight.
Yes.
Counsel Worthley.
Yes.
Counsel Gilman, yes. Counsel Gross.
Yes.
Counsel Grow.
Yes.
Counsel Majota.
Yes.
Counsel Memard.
Yes.
Counsel Nolan.
Yes.
Counsel O'Hara.
Yes.
The yeses have it, nine in favor, zero opposed on the amendment. So now we're back to the initial motion. Which is to seek through the mayor's office approval of the use of the friend. Room of the Soy Free Library for May twenty-fourth for a. Meeting of the, uh, for a meeting of the full city council. Um, which would be also a Zoom meeting for those not on the council and all the attendees. Okay, so we're back, that is our motion on the table. Does anybody have any questions on that motion right now? And that was originally by. Me and it was seconded by Council Memard. Okay, any further discussion, counselors? Okay, I'm looking for hands. I don't see, seeing none. Um, roll call vote. So Counselor O'Neil.
Yes.
Counsel Worthley.
Yes.
Counsel Gilman, yes. Counsel Gross.
Yes.
Counsel Grow.
Yes.
Counsel Majota.
Yes.
Counsel Memard.
Yes.
Counsel Nolan.
Yes.
Counsel O'Hara.
Yes.
The yeses have it, nine in favor, zero opposed. Thank you, counselors. Thank you, Ryan, so much for all of your attention and patience with us. We really appreciate it. Thank you. Um, now, order of business, Madam Clerk.
Next order of business is another presentation uh, by Mayor Greg Verga regarding the introduction of Pam Toby. Director of Communications and Constituent Services and Melissa Gillis, Executive Assistant.
I'll turn the meeting over to our very capable mayor, Mayor Greg Verga. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you so much, Madam President, and uh, thank you to the, uh, all the council for indulging us to give you guys the chance to. Meet the finger quotes here, uh, face to face with our staff. Uh, many of you have been in the office since I took uh, the reins in January. But not all of you have been in while Pam and Melissa have been with us. So I'll start with Melissa. Melissa Gillis uh, joined us. Oh, Melissa, when was the day? Sometime in February? Sound about right?
Um, in March.
In March, that was close. Uh, was Melissa's birthday yesterday too, by the way, folks. Um. So.
Happy birthday.
Happy birthday.
Happy birthday. But so Melissa was working for the uh, HR department. We did poach her from them. She was filling in for us on Mondays and Fridays and when we posted the job, thankfully she put in for it and um. She, she accepted because we were very excited to have her and uh, it's been great so far. So I will, let me introduce Pam too, and then you guys can, uh, through the chair, ask questions of the two of them. So Pam just finished, uh, well, we're into week three now, Pam, correct?
Yeah, week three, yeah.
Uh, and so um, this, a, as you guys know before from previous discussions. We, uh, the administration opted not to go with the position of assistant CIO. And instead we revived this position that Pam has that was originally created and held by um. Created for and held by uh, Chris Secaranza in his first stint with the city, I don't know, six or seven years ago. And it's sort of been dormant and we felt that with the, the firepower that we had with um, Jill. We didn't really need that assistant position, but we did need some help with communications and constituent services. So we, Jill and I have been sort of doing uh, this work, just the two of us for the most part, up until a couple of weeks ago. And now we have our team in place, all four of us, and we're feeling pretty good about it. We're excited about uh, what's ahead. So with that, I'd like to just hand it over to you, Madam President, to see if the council would like to grill my team.
Great, thank you so much. Welcome to both of you. Counselors, do you have any questions for either Pam Toby or Melissa Gillis? Um, Counsel Nolan.
Uh, not really a question. Um, Melissa, you've done a great job with the HR department. I've already dealt with a few constituents. I've already dealt with a few constituents that have talked to you and spoken with you on city issues and you've been spot on. So that's just in the first few weeks, I can't wait to see how the rest of the career goes. Uh Pam, uh you really don't need any introduction. Um you've been around with so many different committees and activities in the city and I've met with you as. Um your position with Greg and Val and Jill on our regular, you know, bi-weekly. Um mayor's uh counselors meeting and your note taken and your. Your work and comments have been exemplary, so I I think that there really is a great team in that corner. And uh I I can't thank you enough for both stepping up and I think it's going to be great for the entire city, and thank you both.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other um questions or comments from city councilors? Uh Counsel O'Neil and then Counsel Worthley.
It, thank you. Uh this question is for Pam, um so you will be a Director of Communications and Constituent Services. So if I have a constituent calling me with an issue, would I tell them to call you or would I call you? How would that work?
Either, what either is fine with me, I'm happy to speak with them directly. Or if you would prefer to work with me directly, whatever is easier for you all, um I'm happy to do whatever works.
Okay, thank you.
No problem.
Thank you, Counsel, Counsel Worthley.
Yes, so to Pam, you're going to hear a thousand times, it's nice to see another Toby, Toby back in the office again, I'm sure you've already heard it already. Um but your skill set and your credibility doesn't come just from your father's past experience. You've earned this on your own, and so I want to give you a lot of credit, it's a hard job, you've got a great administration to work with. Um and I'm going to try to make sure that I don't overextend any um uh use of your office, but let us know how we can be helpful, but congratulations. And then Melissa, it's great to see a fellow class nineteen ninety-five um member.
Counsel Worthey, your audio is no longer on. Think you are frozen. Still frozen, we can't hear you. Maybe you have Bluetooth, I'm not sure.
Sorry.
Now you're back, go ahead, continue.
I had some great accolades for you, Melissa, but um I think the work you did in the personnel office speaks for itself. Um I have a lot of faith in you and I think this council does too, I'm glad to see Mayor Bergen made two good decisions again.
Great, thank you. Anyone else like to say something? Seeing none, um thank you for the new team, all being here tonight. Um to introduce yourselves and to um to witness of our city council meeting and we look forward to working with you, so thank you.
Now go have supper.
Yes, thank you. Thanks, guys.
Thank you, Mayor. Um next order of business, Madam Clerk.
The next order of business is the confirmation of new appointment.
And I will turn control of the meeting over to our ONA Chair, Counsel Sean Nolan.
Alrighty, and we're going to start up with our first confirmation of new appointment. Uh Craig Anderson, uh Craig, how are you doing today?
Good, how are you?
We're doing well, um so I am going to read a motion for you. And then we'll ask you how you're doing and and again, and if anybody has any questions. So on a motion by Counsel Harris, seconded by Counselor Majota. The Ordinance Administration Committee voted by roll call, three in favor, zero opposed. To recommend the city council appoint Craig Anderson to the Board of Registers, term due expire February fourteenth, two thousand twenty-five, and I so move.
Second.
We have a motion by Counsel Nolan and a seconded by, I believe it was Counsel Worthley. Is there a discussion, councilors? Um Counsel, um Mayor Verga, would you like to say something before we take a vote?
Yes, I just want to give a little background, so the the Board of Register has is three members. And how currently is set up is as a Democrat uh member, a Republican member, which is the position Craig will be taking. And currently, there's an unenrolled voter. Uh so how it works for the selections for the two parties is the local party sends three names to the administration. And the decision is with me to pick one. So they sent me three names, I did virtual interviews with all three, and in the end, I felt Craig was the best fit. And uh he's done a lot, former Eagle Scout, um he's on the Stage Four Park Advisory Committee. And um so I'm glad he's he's joining the Board of Registers.
Thank you, Mayor.
Is there any other?
Like to welcome Jill Cahill, our CIO, who just joined the call as well. Um so we have a motion, we have a seconded, um and I think we're ready for a roll call vote.
Is there, is there any questions or comments from any councilors that like to ask Craig?
Seeing none, a roll call vote, uh Counselor O'Neil.
Yes.
Counsel Worthley.
Yes.
Counsel Gilman, yes. Counsel Gross.
Yes.
Counsel Grow. Counsel Grow, you're muted.
I'm having trouble tonight, yes.
Thank you, Counsel Majota.
Yes.
Counsel Memard.
Yes, thank you, Greg.
Counsel Nolan.
Yes, thank you, Craig.
And Counsel O'Hara.
Yes.
Yes, have it, nine in favor, zero opposed, welcome Craig.
Yep.
Next order of business, Counsel Nolan.
All right, the next order of business will be for the Community Preservation Commission uh Committee, uh Harry Hoglander. Who's going to be fulfilling an unexpired term. Uh Harry, how you doing tonight?
So I see Judith Hoglander, so I'm not sure if that's Harry with her, so I will let her in.
Can you hear me now?
We can, Harry, how you doing tonight?
Well, that's not Judith speaking, but it's me.
So Harry, thank you for stepping up with the Community Preservation Committee. Um you've been involved in the city for a long time and your work is well-recognized. Um for some people in the committee, if you just want to give a brief description of why you want to be on the committee, that'd be excellent.
Well, I guess um I was thinking about this the other day and having been in, I don't know how deeply I was involved, but my memory serves me going all the way back to Paul's Hill. When the uh when the CPC uh made attempts to uh go forward. Uh and was eventually authorized, and I've seen so much, so many projects that have uh not only gotten life. But have given the city so much that I am happy to serve and try to do my best to fulfill what the uh vision is of the CPC.
Excellent, I believe we uh we all just got done paying for Paul's Hill not long ago, and that was a project well worth it. Before we read the motion, is there any questions or comments from anybody else on the on the council?
Um Counselor Grow and then Counsel Worthley.
I just want to thank Harry and by extension Judith for their involvement in the city. They are truly a Gloucester powerhouse couple in terms of community involvement, so anytime we can get them roped in to do some. Some public service is a good thing for the city, so I'm I'm really grateful for uh for this nomination and I'm grateful for Harry's willingness to to uh to to join the committee, so thank you.
Thank you, Counsel, Counsel Worthley.
Yes, I've had the honor of knowing Harry for close to thirty years, twenty-five, at least twenty-five years now. And um everything he works on, I don't want to say turns to gold, because that's almost too much of a Midas touch, but everything he turns, he works on is a success. And so I think we're very lucky to have him, and so thank you, Greg, for recommending him and for ONA confirming his appointment. I'm looking forward to voting for you, Harry.
And the other comments from councilors, um Counsel Verga, I mean, Tom, I'm sorry, you were a former council, but now you're the mayor, so go ahead, Craig.
Well, first of all, I just want to thank the ONA Committee for uh putting Harry's nomination appointment through, even though he was unable to attend the the ONA meeting, so uh thank you for that. Um and Harry, the the term he's uh the unexpired term was held by Pam Toby, so it's uh it works out well that I took someone from CPC and and I. I put someone who's very qualified, and Harry has a history of public service from his days in the Air Force through the National Mediation Board. He had been appointed by both President George W. Bush and Barack Obama. So he's he's been around the block and he he knows um what it means to serve, and I'm so happy that he's willing to serve once again.
Thank you, Mayor.
Excellent, so without any questions, I'd like to read the motion. On a motion by Counsel Harris, seconded by Counselor Majota. The Ordinance Administration Committee voted by roll call, three in favor, zero opposed to recommend the city council appoint. Harry Hoglander fulfill the unexpired term to the Community Preservation Committee, term due expire February fourteenth, two thousand twenty-four, and I so move.
Second.
A motion from Counsel Nolan and a second by um Counsel O'Hara. Is there a discussion, councilors? Seeing no hands, roll call vote, Counsel O'Neil.
Yes, I'd like to thank uh Mr. Hoglander for his service and um my vote is yes, of course.
Thank you, Counsel Worthley.
Gladly, yes.
Counsel Gilman, yes. Counsel Gross.
Yes, and and thank you for everything you've done and everything you're going to do in the future, Harry.
Counsel Grow. You are muted.
Absolutely.
Counsel Majota.
Yes, a hundred percent.
Counsel Memard.
Yes, and thank you, Harry.
Counsel Nolan.
Absolutely, thank you, Harry.
Counsel O'Hara.
Yes.
The yeses have it, nine in favor, zero opposed, thank you so much, Harry. Next order of business, Madam Clerk.
Next order of business is the consent agenda.
Councilors, would anyone like to pull any matter off the consent agenda for for tonight, April twelfth? Seeing none, I would like to remove two, just to explain, and then I'll put them right back on. Um I would like to explain two of the council orders that, um first of all, council, City Council two thousand twenty-two. Zero twelve, Memard and Gilman, we've ordered that the fiscal twenty-three municipal budget process only. And a brief municipal finance review be referred to the BNF Committee meeting of April twenty-first. And that this meeting also be posted as a committee of the whole. Let me just describe why we're requesting that. We had discussed having a meeting on our budget process and municipal finance. And with the budget quickly approaching, we thought rather than have a standalone meeting, which we're all feeling pretty overwhelmed with our meeting schedule. We could fit this into a normal BNF meeting. And if you can't make the meeting, you can just watch it on Zoom the next day. It's an educational meeting and it's going to be part of that meeting, so that is one thing. So I'd like to put that back on the consent agenda now that I've removed it and explained it. And then the other one is Council, City Council two thousand twenty-two, oh fourteen, Gilman, amend city council rules of procedure by adding rule nineteen. Request to seek information from city staff, and we'd like to, um I'd like to refer that to ONA. And again, uh councilors, all that is is it's a new governance issue that we should add to our rules of procedure. Having been getting advice and feedback from our mayor and our CIO. In terms of the appropriate way we should be getting information from city staff. And that way, we can put this back on our governance agenda and discuss it in ONA. So I'd like to put that back on the consent agenda, is there someone that would like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda as noted?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, so we have um a motion by Counsel Worthley and seconded by Counsel Memard to accept the consent agenda as noted. Um discussion, councilors? Roll call vote, um Counsel O'Neil.
Yes.
Counselor Worth, Worth, yes. Counsel Gilman, yes. Counsel Gross.
Yes.
Counsel Grow.
Yes.
Counsel Majota.
Yes.
Counsel Memard.
Yes.
Counsel Nolan.
Yes.
Counsel O'Hara.
Yes.
Yes, as have it, nine in favor, zero opposed, and I can tell that we have a cheerleader in the Majota family right now.
Yes, 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 it is definitely bedtime for the little one.
Anyway, um so next order of business, Madam Clerk.
Next order of business is the Budget and Finance Standing Committee report of April seventh.
Terrific, and I'd love to turn the control of the meeting over to uh BNF Chair, Counsel Scott Memard. Thank you.
Thank you, Victor, thank you very much, Val. Uh rather than take this as a consent agenda tonight, we thought we'd, we had the time and we'd go through the items individually. We had six grant acceptances that were voted on by Budget and Finance, uh five of them are routine and the sixth one is not. The sixth one's a gangbuster, uh so which we'll be giving to do attention to. But I'll proceed with, uh the first one was a committee recommendation, uh Budget and Finance voted unanimously. To rec uh but to uh recommend the city council accept cash donations under Mass General Law forty-four fifty-three A to support the Cape Anne Veterans Services. In the amount of three hundred and fifty dollars from the following members within our community, Trinity Congregational Church and Linda and Ed Camo totaling three hundred and fifty, three hundred and fifty dollars. And I'd like to thank them and thank Adam for his efforts and move to accept.
Seconded.
Uh we have a motion made by Counsel Memard, seconded by Counsel Worthley, is there a discussion, councilors? Um seeing none, roll call vote, Counsel O'Neil.
Yes.
Counsel Worthley.
Yes.
Counsel Gilman, yes. Counsel Gross.
Yes.
Grow.
Yes.
Counsel Majota.
Yes.
Counsel Memard.
Yes.
Counsel Nolan.
Yes.
Counsel O'Hara.
Yes.
Yes, as have it, nine in favor, zero opposed, thank you. Next order of business, Counsel Memard.
Thank you, yes, the second item from Budget and Finance this evening is a memorandum from the Fire Chief requesting our acceptance of an updated award. Amounts in the fifty-fifth fiscal year twenty-twenty-two, school-based and senior safe grants. And I'll read the motion, Budget and Finance recommended unanimously that the city council accept a state grant under Mass General Law forty-four fifty-three A. An amendment to the fiscal year twenty-twenty-two, senior awareness and fire education or S A F E, safe grant. From the Mass Executive Office of Public Safety and Security Department of Fire Services. In the amount of one thousand fifty-five dollars for a revised total grant amount of three, three thousand fifty-five dollars. This is for the purpose of providing fire and life safety education to uh our seniors, and there is no local match for this grant, and I so move.
Second.
Motion made by Counsel Memard, seconded by Counsel Worthley, is there a discussion, councilors? Seeing none, roll call vote, Counsel O'Neil.
Yes.
Counsel Worthley.
Yes.
Counsel Gilman, yes. Counsel Gross.
Yes.
Counsel Grow.
Yes.
Counsel Majota.
Yes.
Counsel Memard.
Yes.
Counsel Nolan.
Yes.
Counsel O'Hara.
Yes.
Yes, as have it, nine in favor, zero opposed, thank you, Counsel, next order of business, Counsel Memard.
Uh the 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 next item is actually a part B of number two, it's a uh acceptance of additional funding for the safe grants for students. The first one was for seniors. And uh Budget and Finance voted unanimously to recommend city council accept a state grant under Mass General Law forty-four fifty-three A. Again, an amendment to the fiscal year twenty-twenty-two, school-based student awareness of fire education, S A F E or safe grant. From the Massachusetts Executive Office of Public Safety and Security Department of Fire Services. In the amount of one thousand seventy-five dollars for a revised grant total of five thousand one hundred and seventy-five dollars. This is for the purpose of providing fire and life safety education to school-aged children in the community, and there is no local match for this grant, and I so move.
Second.
Motion made by Counsel Memard, seconded by Counsel Worthley, is there a discussion? Um Counsel Worthley.
Yeah, just a tiny bit of discussion, this is really for the benefit of the public, we had accepted these grants already, as discussed at Budget and Finance, and the Fire Chief let us know that there were. Some other municipalities that didn't. some other municipalities that didn't participate. And as a result, it meant more money for each city and town. And so that's why we're amending it. And we've already accepted the bulk of this. And this is just a mostly a clerical point to say we've got more money. And the Fire Chief has come to us every single time with additional money. I gotta give him credit.
Thank you. Any other parts of the discussion on this? I've seen none. A roll call vote, Council O'Neill.
Yes, yes.
Yes.
Council Gilman, yes. Council Gross.
Yes.
Council Grow.
Yes.
Council Majota.
Yes.
Council Memard.
Yes.
Council Nolan.
Yes.
Council O'Hara.
Yes.
Yes, as have it. Nine in favor, zero opposed. Continue, Council Memard.
Yeah, and thank you, Council, Councilor Worthley for that background there. It was, Chief Smith is doing very well for us. The third item is a memorandum from the interim Community Development Director requesting our acceptance of a two thousand twenty-one Green Communities Competitive Grant. And this is in the amount of ninety-two thousand eight hundred and seven dollars. And I'll read the motion. Budget and Finance voted unanimously to recommend city council accept a state grant under Mass General Law forty-four fifty-three A from the Massachusetts Department of Energy Resources, the Green Communities Division Competitive Grant for ninety-two thousand eight hundred and seven dollars for the purpose of implementing several municipal energy reduction efforts in the community, including Talbot Rink, Talbot Ice Rink, Energy Management System for twenty-seven thousand two hundred and seven dollars, O'Malley Middle School LED lighting, thirty-eight thousand one twenty-three, Veteran Center LED lighting for three thousand five hundred and nineteen dollars, the Central Fire Station LED lighting for eighteen thousand four hundred and ninety-seven dollars, the Magnolia Fire Station LED lighting, two thousand one hundred and forty-two dollars, the West Gloucester Fire Station LED lighting for one thousand seven hundred and six dollars, and the Bayview Fire Station, last but not least, LED lighting for one thousand six hundred and thirteen dollars. This grant has a local match funding requirement of forty thousand six hundred and twenty dollars. And the grant contract end date is through September thirtieth, twenty twenty-three, and I so move.
Second.
Motion made by Council Memard, seconded by Council Worthley. Is there a discussion, councilors? Seeing none, roll call vote, Council O'Neill.
Yes.
Council Worthley.
Yes.
Council Gilman, yes. Council Gross.
Yes.
Council Grow.
Yes.
Council Majota.
Yes.
Council Memard.
Yes.
Council Nolan.
Yes.
Council O'Hara.
Yes.
The S's have it. Nine in favor, zero opposed. Next motion, Council Memard.
Item number four from Budget and Finance this evening is a memorandum for, from our Shellfish Constable requesting acceptance for a Fishing for Energy Grant from the National Fish and Wildlife Foundation in the amount of ten thousand dollars. By way of background, our illustrious Shellfish Constable, a state award-winning constable made this presentation and Budget and Finance voted unanimously to recommend the city council accept a federal grant under Mass General Law forty-four fifty-three A, a National Fish and Wildlife Grant in the amount of ten thousand dollars. And this is for the purpose of funding a dumpster which is used to dispose of derelict fishing gear. And there is no local match for this grant and I so move.
Second.
It's a motion made by Council Memard, seconded by Council Worthley. Is there a discussion?
This is a, a repeating grant. It's actually a larger amount, but as maybe perhaps Councilor Gross can speak to. This provides a very valuable service to our commercial fishing industry and helps alleviate both water and shoreside pollution.
Council Gross, would you like to elaborate?
Yeah, this, I don't, we didn't have this dumpster last year, but we've had it for previous years. And it's a huge relief, particularly now with hilts limiting what can be taken to them. And right now, I don't know if anybody's been paying attention, but there's a lot of, of rope changes going on right now. And rope wears out pretty, you know, regularly. So there's, you know, probably enough rope on Cape Anne to circum, circumnavigate the world. And this is a really, this is a huge service for, for our, our fishermen. And not just lobstermen, because you can also dispose of nets with, which some disposal areas do not want to deal with. And so it, it's really in traps, the rope, traps, netting. It's really, it's, it's a wonderful thing to have happen because it takes it out of the environment and out of people's yards and it, it really, it's a very good thing. That's all.
Council Gross, could you also, if you don't mind, speak a little bit to Peter Semenera's award recently?
Oh, well, the, the, the Shellfish Constables Association of the State awarded our, our Shellfish Constable, Peter Semenera, is Shellfish Constable of the Year in Massachusetts. So it's quite an award brought home. We want to recognize Pete on that.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Okay, any further discussion, councilors? Okay, we had a motion by Council Memard, seconded by Council Worthley, and we can do a roll call vote now. Council O'Neill.
Yes.
Council Worthley.
Yes.
Council Gilman, yes. Council Gross.
Yes.
Council Grow.
Yes.
Council Majota.
Yes.
Council Memard.
Yes.
Council Nolan.
Yes.
Council O'Hara.
Yes.
Yes, as have it. Nine in favor, zero opposed. Next motion, Council Memard.
Yes, our fifth item from Budget and Finance is a memorandum from the D P W Director requesting our acceptance of a two thousand twenty-two S H R A B Veterans Heritage Grant in the amount of fifteen thousand dollars. And I'll proceed with the motion. Budget and Finance voted unanimously to recommend city council accept a state grant under Mass General Law forty-four fifty-three A, a two thousand twenty-two Veterans Heritage Grant for the Massachusetts State Historical Records Advisory Board. That's what S H R A B stands for. Passed through the Massachusetts Secretary of State's Office in the amount of fifteen thousand dollars to support Cemetery Advisory Committee for the purpose of restoring and preserving fourteen American Revolutionary and eighteen Civil War veterans' gravestones and grave sites in four of the city's cemeteries, the First Parish Burial Ground, the Bayview Cemetery, the Clark Cemetery, and the Cherry Hill Cemetery. And there is again, no local match for this grant and I so move.
Second.
Motion made by Council Memard, seconded by Council Worthley. Is there a discussion, councilors?
Great work.
Council O'Neill and then Council Nolan. Go ahead, Council O'Neill.
Thank you. Is the grant only for these cemeteries or just these, these, what is it, four cemeteries?
And the veteran, the veterans plots there.
Right, but just those four cemeteries? So no others?
Yeah, that's correct.
All right, thank you.
Council Nolan.
It's just kind of a coincidence that we got to see a beautiful restoration of a gravestone today from the Cemetery Advisory Committee and Preservation Committee. They, they work awful hard to make sure that our grave sites and historic memories of forefathers before us come to fruition in restoration. And they deserve this money. And I just want to thank them for all their work at this time.
Thank you, Council Worthley.
Yes, I just want to make a comment. On all the last five agenda items, I could have said the same thing. The staff stepping up and grants with no matches, it's volunteers working with the committees to find these grants and it's donors in the public. And all this is just great news for this community, for our taxpayers, our residents. And I think as one councillor and all of us, I think we're very grateful for the work the city staff has done, the volunteers and the donors. So it's not specific to the cemetery agenda item, but it could be all five, the last five.
Thank you. Any other comments, councilors? Seeing none, a roll call vote, Council O'Neill.
Yes.
Council Worthley.
Yes.
Council Gilman, yes. Council Gross.
Yes.
Council Grow.
Yes.
Council Majota.
Yes.
Council Memard.
Yes.
Council Nolan.
Yes.
Council O'Hara.
Yes.
Yes, as have it. Nine in favor, zero opposed. Next motion, Council Memard.
I, I think that's, that's our report for the evening, isn't it? Oh, no, I, I guess there was one, one more item before us.
Rum roll at the end, but go ahead.
Item number six from Budget and Finance this evening, we received a memorandum from our CFO, John Dunn, requesting acceptance of the ARPA Coronavirus State and Local Fiscal Recovery Funds in the amount of twenty-three million one hundred and seventy-five four hundred and sixty-eight dollars. And I'll make a motion to accept that. And then I'm sure we can hear from the mayor or from Jill Cahill about the, the progress and the process ahead of us in terms of committing that.
Point of order.
Go ahead, Council Grow.
Shouldn't we hear from the mayor before we read the motion?
That'd be welcome.
Through the chair? Sure. So, as you know, the ARPA funding came through, I don't know what exactly when, but in two thousand twenty-one, the, the previous administration didn't take this action, which is sort of the first step so we can actually start to spend this money. It, it's worth noting that there was one commitment made by the previous administration. It was fifty-five thousand dollars for the Cape Anne Climate Coalition. I met with them today. They obviously haven't got the money yet because you guys have been voted to release it or to accept it. But that is a, the Cape Anne Climate Coalition is Gloucester, Manchester, Essex, and Brockport. And three of the communities have chipped into this and they're working on a study through Harvard University. There'll be more on that. So that was the only commitment made by the previous administration. Moving forward, we now have the twenty-three million and some change to spend. This is the first step for you guys to vote to accept it. The process that we are laying out is we have a resident who is willing to serve as sort of like the chairperson for some listening posts throughout the city. My goal is that we hit all five wards and see what people, what the public has as priorities for how to spend this money. We, so, sorry, little trying to, I've got a whole bunch of thoughts in here. So the group will include a city councillor as well as members from the C I A V and the E D I C. And what we want to do is let them go around, hear from people. We don't want to lead the witness. We want to say, make very clear to the, the residents, here are some of the things you cannot do with this ARPA money. Here are some of the categories that we can use this money for. And then just hear from them what we want to do. And then we'll come back to the city council and say, here's what the feedback was. And then the administration would like to have the flexibility to start to disperse some of this money. One thing to keep in mind is we do have a newest sewer plant that is on the horizon. I would love for us, which we are trying to do, find alternate funding sources for that. But the ARPA funds and/or some of the infrastructure money, if not all of it, may have to go to the secondary treatment plant. But ideally, we want to hear from the public to see what their priorities are. And through the grace of God, we'll be able to fulfill some of those priorities with this twenty-three million dollars.
Thank you, Mayor Verga. Also, if either Jill Cahill or John Dunn or our CFO or our assistant auditor, Amit Shayana, wants to speak before we make the motion, that would be great. I see John Dunn's, hello there. Oh, you're still at work. God love you.
Well, my computer was not working at home, so when I got home and figured it out, I came back up here. Lovely to visit Gloucester again today. You know, as, as the mayor said, I mean, that's, we have to make sure that we're spending it in the right place. And there's only certain amounts that can be spent according to, you know, the treasury regulations. So we will, you know, comply with that. There is a huge need in the city for the secondary treatment plant. So it would not be surprising if, you know, a big bundle of that money had to go that way. But we'll wait and see and hear what people want to, want to, you know, give us input on.
Thank you, John. Any other comments from members of city staff before we make a motion on this? Seeing none, Council Memard.
Yes. It's my pleasure to make a motion that the, for you, that Budget and Finance Committee voted unanimously to recommend that the city council accept a federal grant under Mass General Law forty-four fifty-three A, a U S Department of Treasury Grant in the amount of twenty-three million one hundred and seventy-five thousand four hundred and sixty-eight dollars to be expended according to the guidelines established by such agency for the expenditure of such funds under the Coronavirus State and Local Fiscal Recovery Funds program. There is no local grant, no local match for this grant. The S L F R F grant funds may only be used for costs incurred within a specific time period beginning March third, two thousand twenty-one, with all funds obligated by December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-four, and all funds spent by December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-six, and I so move.
Second.
Motion made by Council Memard, seconded by Council Worthley. John Dunn has his hand raised. So without objection, councilors, I'd like to suspend our rules of procedures and like to hear from our CFO, John Dunn.
So I just want to make a comment that it is very likely that those dates that are in this motion may change in the future. So there's going to be, you know, many communities and, and states who have received recipients of these funds. And they're just not going to be able to spend them before those timelines. So just, just be aware that it's likely that, you know, in the future, we're going to come back to you and change those dates.
Thank you for the warning. Council Grow, question?
I do have a question actually, and that is, does the council have a role in approving these expenditures? Or is this an executive decision process only?
CFO Dunn, would you?
Yep, I, I guess, yes. I guess I'll answer that again. So, you know, the expenditures can only be done within the confines of what the, you know, Department of Treasury has, has told us that we can expend, you know, funds on. So they have said that there's only certain issues and certain, you know, things that we can expend these funds on. And if we don't, then they're not going to, you know, we, we can't.
No, no, I, I understand that. The question is, is does the council have a role in approving the final list of expenditures? Or is that simply, is that just an executive decision that's made by the mayor's office?
I am sorry. No, that's an executive decision.
So once we approve this, the council's pretty much out of it?
Yes, as, as the council has been out of it for the CARES Act funds and the FEMA funds that were four and a half million, five billion bucks that have already come through. Yes.
I understand.
Without objection, I'd like to suspend the rules of procedure again and ask Mayor Verga, who has his hand raised.
Yes, so to, to Council Gross's point, yes, well, technically it is a, an administration decision on how to expend the funds. It will not be done in a vacuum. You know, I will keep the, while I don't have to go after this vote, presuming it passes, I don't have to go back to the council and ask for permission of how to spend it. I will keep you guys in the loop every step of the way.
No, I, I appreciate that. I just want, I guess I really just want people to understand that, that once this happens, which is obviously we're not, we're going to accept this twenty-three million dollars. It's, it's, it's your responsibility as the mayor to determine the priorities that the city uses this money for. Obviously in conjunction with your public input, but once this happens, we're, we're sort of, we're spectators.
And I'd say we're still involved in the process, but yes.
Right, because we're going to have five ward meetings, right? And we're also going to appoint, actually Tony Gross is going to be the city councillor that will sit on that team. And if you would accept that appointment, Tony, we would like you to, to serve as, as that member of the council on that team.
I'd be honored.
Thank you. I'm glad you.
Lucky Tony.
Thank you. Okay. Council Worthley, and then we, we need to, we need to keep moving forward. Council Worthley, go ahead.
Better president. So first of all, thank you, Mayor Verga, for outlining a thoughtful plan on how you're going to get public input. This gives you a tremendous opportunity as a mayor. And with this, I feel like I've been, can you hear me, guys?
Yep.
Okay, I'm sorry. Everyone stood still for a second. We're they're ready for a shocker or something. With great power comes great responsibility, and I fully respect your ability to exercise good judgment on this. And the fact that you're adding a councillor to your committee.
Ah, you're frozen.
Council Worthley.
That was the punchline, though.
Go ahead. Now you're back, so continue.
I don't know where I left off, but I was just saying that, um.
The fact that he added a member of the council onto the committee.
Yes.
Great power comes great responsibility.
I can't use that once a year, maybe, so.
That's not for today, but for tomorrow as well.
Hurry up, you're going to freeze again.
Right. Confident in your appointment, Madam Chair, with Tony Gross as our relatively strong budget watchdog, but also thoughtful participant in the community. I think we're in great shape, and so I look forward to your ideas, Greg, and and your process that you've laid out very clearly.
Thank you, and I appreciate the Spider-Man reference. It was, it was good.
Any other discussion on this motion?
No, I I can add that, you know, if we're looking at the secondary treatment plan, I am a former turd herder. So.
Oh, geez. What's, what's, I never heard that before.
I used to work, I worked at the treatment plant. The wastewater plant.
I think I heard what you said, but anyway. So we have a motion, we have a seconded, and we need a roll call for this really important amount of money, of twenty-three million, one hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars, four hundred and sixty-eight. This is pretty awesome. Counselor O'Neill.
Yes.
Counsel Worthley.
Yes.
Counsel Gilman, yes. Counsel Gross.
Yes.
Counsel Grow.
Yes.
Counsel Majota.
Yes.
Counsel Memard.
Yeah, I guess so, yes.
Think about it.
Counsel Nolan.
Yes.
Counsel O'Hara.
Yes.
The yeses have it nine in favor, zero opposed. Thank you, city staff, for sticking with us tonight and being to to present.
Council President, before we move off the BNF, and I should have talked about it back when we voted the motion. And if we could ask either John Dunn or Joanne, I think that the the trash to energy, the the marine fisheries grant is time sensitive. I don't know. John, can, does, do we have to vote to reconsider that so it frees up the money, or do we have to wait for the minutes to be approved? Because it's, it should have been, you know, if it was here last week, it would have been too soon.
Excuse me. So, yes, I I think if you want to move it along quickly and not have something, you know, come up tomorrow, then, you know, have a, you know, have a reconsideration vote.
Council Member, would you reread that motion so we can?
Joanne had her hand up, too.
Okay, go ahead. Joanne.
Yes, we we don't wait for the minutes to be approved for the next meeting. All measures have to wait twenty-four hours before we can do a certificate of vote. So if you want to reconsider, it'll just save you twenty-four hours. We could do the, if the motion for reconsider passes, if not, on Thursday, we do do a certificate of vote, and once the mayor signs it, we give it to the auditor's office to post.
Yeah, then, okay, thanks. There's no point, then. Let's move on.
Okay, thank you. Good conversation.
Thank you, Tony.
Thank you. Next order of business, Madam Clerk.
Next order of business is the ordinance and administration standing committee report of April fourth.
Counsel Nolan.
All righty, we have one thing in front of us tonight. It's just as important as the twenty-three million dollars that we got from the state. And that's the election election of the city clerk pursuant to the charter section two-two dash seven A. If you'd like, I'll read the recommendation, and then we can move on to comments or questions.
Thank you.
So on a motion by Council Nolan, seconded by Council O'Hara, the ordinance administration committee voted by roll call, three in favor, zero oppose pursuant to the city charter section two dash seven A concerned the election of city clerk to elect Joanne Sanos as city clerk to a term of April two thousand twenty-two to April two thousand twenty-four, and I so move.
Second.
We have a motion made by Counsel Nolan, a seconded by Counsel O'Hara. Discussion Councillors.
Counsel Gilman.
I had to wait for this. So I am just totally grateful to the work of our city clerk, Joey Encino. So this is my seventh year working with her. And some of the things that have, she clearly has been a standout is leading the election process. She led a recall in a recount public meeting, and she did it with professionalism and knowledge. Her multitasking abilities in terms of public records, elections, tons of new unfunded mandates that come into the clerk's office, Zoom calls, staffing, assistance to new councillors, council orders, research, and special event co-chair, and then just having the patience and the professionalism with the members of the public. So I will be supporting this, and I'm honored to be able to say these comments in front of your fellow councillors. So thank you.
Thank you.
Counsel Nolan.
I'd like to echo everything that was just said. It's perfectly, I'm mostly thankful that you can tolerate us, and thank you for your patience and working with us through, like Val said, almost seven years of of not trial and error, but trial and learning. And we don't have the era because we have you. And you lead us in the right way and give us the guidance that we're looking for. And I will be supporting you tonight. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Counsel Grow.
I just want to add my, I always appreciate everything that you do and your staff. You guys are running a terrific office there, and and things are going well. I just have one question, frankly, and it, I just, who's your favorite? I mean.
I have nine bosses. That's what I I tell people. There are nine bosses, and they're no favorite. They're all treated equally.
All right, I'm not to reconsider this.
Any other comments, Councillors? Counselor O'Neill.
Yeah, I just want to say thank you, Joanne. You're you're you know everything that I need to know. So I'm in awe of what you know just off the top of your head, and I'm grateful to your staff, too, because they're terrific. They're really knowledgeable and helpful and really friendly, so it's doesn't seem like a chore when I call, you know. So thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Any other hands raised? Council Worthley.
Yes, Joanne, I've known you for pretty much my entire life and your family, and we're very, very lucky to have you. I think people underestimate how much city business goes through your office in terms of the public is from dog licenses to birth certificates to elections. And the fact that you can manage all that and manage all of us, really, it's not an easy job, and I think we're very grateful and very lucky to have you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from any other councillors? Counsel Gross and then Counsel Memard.
Yeah, Joanne, I've had the the pleasure and honor of working with you for quite a few years, you know, from the Waterways Board, where we had several ordinance things that had to come through, plus regulations, minutes. Just and just a whole host of things that had to be done, and working with your office has always been just, it's one of those calls you enjoy making, and you feel better when you've gotten off of it. So I just really want to thank you for the professionalism and the quality of work you guys do. So thank you.
Thank you.
Counsel Worthley.
I already spoke.
Oh, you already spoke. I'm sorry.
And so Majota.
Counsel.
Like I said in O and A, Joanne, you're just amazing, and, you know, love being able to just call you or email you, and you have the answers for us, and if we don't, if you don't, you'll definitely get it for us. You're just amazing, and so is your team. So thank you for everything you do.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other councillors?
Council Member.
Memard and Counsel O'Hara. Council Member.
Joanne, thank, thank you to you. Joanne, thank you, and thank your staff, and ditto to everything that has already been said, but heartfelt thank you.
Thank you.
Counsel O'Hara.
Yeah, I just want to support everything that has been said. Joanne does a wonderful job. We hear from the constituents on a regular basis how compassionate and helpful the office is when they go inside, no matter what their request is, and they get all kinds of requests, even things that are outside of their area of responsibility as far as direction comes from the city clerk. Who else to ask? They can, they have all the answers where where people can go to to get the answers. So, Joanne, I want to thank you and thank everyone in your office.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My thing.
And I'd love to hear from Joanne if you'd like to say something before we we cast our roll call vote.
Want to thank the councillors for their support. I'm looking forward to working with all of you the next two years and with the administration. And thank you for the kind words that, you know, I have a lot of knowledge. I've been with the city since nineteen ninety-seven, working my way through different departments. I don't always have the answer, but like I said at O and A, I will find the answer for you. I reach out to my peers, I reach out to my coworkers, and, you know, just for guidance if I don't know the answer. So if I don't know the answer, I will get back to you. And like I said, at O and A, you might not like the answer, but I I will give you an answer. Worked very hard to improve customer service in the city clerk's office, changing processes, and I have to be very grateful for the staff that I have. And we have a good group. We work well together, and we're looking always ways to improve customer service. So I thank you for your support and looking forward to working with you for the next two years. Thank you.
Thank you, Joanne. Councillors, roll call vote. Counselor O'Neill.
Absolutely. Thank you, Joanne.
Counsel Worthley. Counsel Worthley. We will come back to Counsel Worthley because he is frozen. Counsel Gilman, yes. Counsel Gross.
Yes.
Counsel Grow.
Absolutely.
Counsel Majota.
Absolutely.
Counsel Memard.
Yes.
Counsel Nolan.
Absolutely. Thank you, Joanne.
Counsel O'Hara.
Yes.
Counsel Worthley.
He's gone.
I lost him completely.
Yeah, true.
So the, we have eight in favor and one technical difficulty. Congratulations, Joanne.
Thank you.
Next order of business, Madam Clerk.
Is the planning and development standing committee report of April sixth.
You got nothing.
Thank you, Counsel Grow. Next order of business, Madam Clerk.
Public hearing twenty twenty-one dash zero thirty-two, rezoning twenty twenty-one dash zero zero three in accordance with Gloucester zoning ordinance section one eleven point two parentheses A, amend Gloucester zoning ordinance sections two point three point one residential uses, three point two dimensional table, three point two point two dimensional requirements for multifamily dwellings and their accessory uses other than signs, and three point one point six B building heights in excess of thirty-five feet.
I would like to open the public hearing and note that it's been continued from March twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-two, and this will be continued on April twenty-six, two thousand and twenty-two. The hearing remains opened, and we will resume where we left off. And we encourage members of the public to read our minutes, watch the Zoom meeting. And for those who are here, we did mention this early in the meeting that we were going to be continuing this. And our Planning Director interim Community Development Director is unable to be in attendance tonight, and that's a major part of the next step of the public hearing. Counsel Grow, your hand is raised.
It is. I just wanted to add for clarification to the public that this was also continued at the Planning and Development Subcommittee level, and that will be, it'll be taken up at that point on the April twentieth Planning and Development Meeting at five thirty. We will, we will be discussing the the amendments in full at that point prior to the public hearing. So if you want to, you know, be 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 present for that conversation, we will be there. It's not going to be a public hearing. It's going to be with the council and with with the planning director.
So let me just clarify that. The we have two, we have two parallel groups of amendments right now that are happening. The one that we are continuing right now that we just mentioned are the six zoning amendments that we began, and that one is being continued until next week. The other ones, which included the and the R five are going to be continued at the P and D on April twentieth, and that will be the first time that we will be hearing those at P and D.
Yeah, that's.
Okay, great. I just wanted to be clear on that. Thank you. Next order of business, Madam Clerk.
Next order of business, public hearing twenty twenty-two zero zero eight, special city council permit twenty twenty-two dash zero zero two, Main Street number two two two, map thirteen, lot seventeen, Gloucester Zone of Ork Gloucester Zoning Ordinance, section two point three point one eight, conversion to our new multifamily or apartment dwelling, seven or more dwelling units to convert from a three-family to a seven-family dwelling in the CB Central Business District.
Great. I'd like to open the public hearing, and I would like to comment on this before we begin to hear from the applicant that at the beginning of the meeting had technical difficulties. And we had the wrong link that was posted, and we amended that, we fixed it. We fortunately had our IT director that was on the call. And but we felt that we discussed this at that point, and we're going to allow for the public hearing to begin tonight. But we're also going to allow people to also come back at our meeting on April twenty-six, which is two weeks from tonight, to continue to participate in the public comment because we were concerned that if someone tried to log in right at six tonight, they might not have been successful. So I just wanted to be clear. So right now, we're opening up the public hearing, and we're going to hear from the applicants. Meredith Fine and Counsel Nolan, go ahead. You have your question, your hand raised.
I just wanted, so we're gonna, we're gonna open open in statements, and then we're gonna listen to public comment. And then we're not gonna move on anything or have council questions on this until next the the twenty-sixth.
I think that's the fair way to go. That would be my understanding without objection, councillors. That seems to be appropriate.
Thank you.
Okay, so Meredith Fine, take it away. Your. Thank you.
So did P and D present a report on this?
So did P and D present a report on this?
Um, we are, right now, we're not there yet. We're opening the public hearing in the first thing. The public hearing is that the applicant presents.
All right, I got it. Thank you. Um, my name is Meredith Fine. I'm an attorney at forty-six Middle Street. I represent two twenty-two Main Street Holdings LLC. The first point I want to make is, um, that the folks who are the partners in this LLC are, they're not, um, out of town sharks looking to make a quick buck. These are local folks. Um, the manager lives in Manchester. Uh, Jim McKenna, who was the C A O under John Bell is a member. Uh, a woman who owns a local restaurant is a member. These, these are local folks. They care about this community. They're invested in this building. Um, this building, I'll show you a photo of it in a second, is, um, in the commercial, in the Central Business District, it's got three units of commercial on the first floor and then three floors of residential, uh, totaling seven units. It has no parking. It's a, it's a big building on a small lot. Um, when these folks bought the property in two thousand and twenty, we discovered that it was only permitted for three units. It was allowed to have three residential units by right, but that the additional four units had never been approved by the city council. So the K P N Savings Bank was their lender, allowed them to close on the purchase on the condition that we get the permits after the closing. Showing a great faith in, uh, in myself and in the city government. May I share my screen?
Yes, please do.
So this is the building. I'm sure you're all familiar with it. Um, it's been painted since this photograph was taken. And it's been seven, it's been taxed as four to eight units for a long, long time. They did, in, in the late nineteen eighties, they did a renovation of the building. They renovated all the, uh, apartments. So this is, uh, the electrical permit from nineteen eighty-nine. Shows seven residential units and three commercial. Here are two affidavits from previous owners that are in the city's building file, building file, attesting to the fact that there have been seven residential units there since at least the early nineteen sixties. Um, and then um, this is, uh, another permit from the renovation. This is the building permit. And it says change of use, no, seven residential units, three commercial, so no change of use. And then, um, here's the, here's the, uh, that building permit being closed up, seven apartments. And then the city did an inspection in two thousand and eight and showing seven residential units. So this has been seven residential units for a long, long time. And the city was well aware of it, has been taxing it as, uh, seven units for a long, long time. So when we submitted our application, um, the Community Development Director and the Building Inspector have to sign off on that application. And they signed off on it without any comment. Um, when we got to P and D, um, P and D had a question about whether um, the inclusionary housing section of the zoning ordinance applies to this property. And that's section five point eleven. In other words, because it's seven units, is one unit required to be affordable? So we hashed that out over a couple of meetings. Um, my position was that the zoning ordinance clearly um, applies only to new construction. The zoning ordinance mentions in several places um, when you apply for building permit, when you apply for building permit, when you create new units. So to me, the language was quite clearly intended for new construction. And we're not applying for any building permits. We're just certifying what's been there for a long time. And then the, um, the city solicitor said, uh, and the building inspector opined that the inclusionary housing section does not apply to this property because we're not creating seven units. We're simply adding four units to the existing three and therefore, um, the inclusionary zoning ordinance was not triggered. Um, these units are already affordable in a very real way. Um, the building has no parking, no elevator. Most of the units are subsidized by Action Inc. Almost all of the units fall below the, uh, ceiling for affordability anyway. Um, and this is in a very hot market for, um, this is in a very hot market for, uh, rental property. And it meets all the criteria, the application meets all the criteria that are required for special property. It's in harmony with the central business zone, which encourages residential on the first floor. And I'm sorry, commercial on the first floor and residential up above it. It addresses a community need by having more, uh, look, um, affordable housing. There's no effect on traffic flow or utilities or the neighborhood character or the natural environment because nothing's changing. Nothing is changing. This building is staying exactly the same way that it is. Uh, and the fiscal act is, is the fiscal, fiscal impact is, um, been a benefit to the city. As I said earlier, it's been taxed as a seven unit for a long time. And so the city's been getting the benefit of that money. Um, so, um, we feel that it meets all the criteria that are required for special permit. And, and, and we don't feel that the, um, the inclusionary zoning applies. And that's what your city attorney has said as well. So, um, happy to work with you on this, happy to answer your questions, although I think I'm not getting any questions tonight. Um, but this is a very straightforward, well-intended proposal just to certify what's been there since before I was born.
Thank you, Attorney Fine. Appreciate that. Um, is there a, um, of, a person that would like to speak in opposition? Seeing none. So let's go back to the, um, the, the public hearing component. As we said that we would listen to people tonight. And, um, again, next week, on two weeks, on, um, the, um, on May, I'm sorry, on April twenty-sixth because of the technical difficulties.
So, Madam President.
Yep.
I'm just to be clear. So at the next meeting, we'll have a more of a dialogue than we're able to do right now.
That's correct. Right now, what we're doing is we, we agreed because we have people that expected to be able to speak tonight that we would, um, hear your presentation and then, um, allow people to speak in favor or in opposition. And then at that point, we will pause and we will continue the public hearing until the twenty-sixth, of which time we will continue. And then we will do the correspondence communications and then we will have the opportunity to ask questions. We will then close the public hearing, or actually there's a rebuttal opportunity as well. And then we will close, um, the public hearing at that point if, and, um, and do the committee report. And that's when we will have the opportunity for us to deliberate.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. So right now, um, there any members of the public that are here that would like to speak in either favor or in opposition of this proposal? Um, would you raise your hand if, if you would, if you're interested? Madam Clerk, um, if you agree with me, I see no hands raised.
There are no hands raised.
Okay, so, um, we will continue the public hearing, um, until, um, the twenty-sixth of April. And for those of you who might hear that uh, or tried to get on the call, let's make sure that we get the word out that we will be continuing this public hearing on the twenty-sixth due to the technical difficulties. But we still have twenty-four people now that are on the call, which is great.
Madam President.
Go ahead. Yep.
I, I guess I have one question. What is the address? Um, I missed on the first step. I just more of a visual. I wanted to see if that's okay.
Oh, it's.
I just got Middle Street. I wanted to make sure I was, I was able to Google map it myself and just to look at the front.
Two-two Main Street.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, um, thank you, Attorney Fine, for, for being here and, um, um, Attorney, um, Basu, at this point, I think that, you know, unfortunately, we're not ready to get to the part that we might have, um, asked questions. Yeah, as well as our C E, C A O, Jill Cahill. But, um, thank you for being here and, um, it is appreciated. Um, next order of business, Madam Clerk.
Next order of business is public hearing twenty twenty-two dash zero zero nine to amend Gloucester Code of Ordinances, Chapter twenty-one Streets, Sidewalks and Other Public Places. Section twenty-one dash nineteen, removal of snow from sidewalks and section twenty-one dash twenty, removal or covering of ice on sidewalks by deleting section twenty-one nineteen and section twenty-one twenty and add in sections twenty-one dash nineteen, twenty-one twenty reserved. And I can explain about the reserved.
Okay, I'd like to open the public hearing and, um, begin by asking our clerk, um, our city clerk to explain the reserved.
Okay, so if the council moves forward to delete these two sections, um, section twenty-one nineteen and twenty-twenty, they're in the middle of chapter twenty-one. So what happens is that, um, we, once we delete a sec, sections of the Code of Ordinances, we reserve them so that if we want to use those numbers again, we can insert in the proper sequence, numerical sequence. So, um, hypothetically, if this moves forward, you're gonna remove nineteen and twenty. And if we didn't reserve those, what will happen? You'll have section twenty-one eighteen, it'll jump all the way to twenty-twenty-two. And then people will wonder where the nineteen and twenty, uh, sections are. So reserve them. We reserve them so that we can put another section in there if we wanted, that would go under that chapter twenty-one. We would just keep the numbers in a sequence.
Thank you. So the public hearing is open and, um, at this point, like to hear and see a show of hands if anybody would like to speak in either favor or in opposition. Um, I see no hands raised. Do you confirm that, Joanne?
Yes, I don't see any raised hands.
So the public hearing on this will continue until April twenty-sixth, so I'm not gonna hit the gavel and close it. So it will remain open due to the technical difficulty we had when people first logged on tonight. So we want to give people a second chance who might have tried and was unsuccessful. So, um, so thank you. And, um, next order of business, Madam Clerk.
Not the, I'm the Human Rights Commission by City Council Representative Counselor Jason Grow.
Great. Counsel Grow.
Well, unfortunately, I was not at the last city council meeting. I was out of town and I haven't had a chance to, to catch up with, uh, the chair at this point. But I would be happy at the next meeting to, uh, to give you an update on things.
Terrific. So we'll put you on, on the next meeting. Thank you. Next order of business, Madam Clerk.
Counsel's request to the mayor.
Okay, counselors, we'll go in order of roll call. Um, we'll start with Counsel O'Neal.
Yes, thank you. I, uh, put two order, two requests into the mayor, um, by way of email. Um, one was requesting that they fix, request to the mayor to D P W to fix a, uh, fence that's down on, um, Fort Square and request through the mayor that the D P W do an inventory of playground equipment and, um, repairs that need to be done, new equipment that needs to be replaced. So that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Um, Counsel Worthley.
Yes, just a quick run through. There was a grant we accepted today and there's a reference to Talbot Rink. And it made me think of a council request I made a month ago. The Talbot Rink sign doesn't exist, is no recognition for Dorothy Talbot. And I think that that's something that should be fixed. And, um, I just want to put that in as a reminder. Second one is ninety-plus percent of the lights on Main Street and Roger Street that are in trees don't work. And as a step in getting them back working, I'd like to request the D P W or the mayor commission someone to do this to remove the light. Electronic stuff stays there, but the lights need to come down. They don't look good anyway as it is. And it's a first step in fixing that. Uh, I put two requests in for both Perkins Street and Green Street, some significant potholes there. I could just make note of that. There's a sign on Railroad Ave, there's a billboard, um, for cannabis. And I think our code, the building code might forbid that. So I'd like to have them request the mayor to have the building inspector look into that in terms of advertising. The last one, it's a, it's a small request but a big action. Um, in this discussion about the zoning changes, been great references, a great number of references to Plan two thousand and one, which is twenty-one years old. I like to put an official request into the mayor's office to initiate some steps to have a conversation about starting a new master plan or update to the old one. So I'm not gonna put it as a formal order or anything like that, but a request to have that conversation and see if we can get started on that again. That's it for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, next is, um, Counsel Gross. Oh, I'm sorry, um, Counsel Gross will, will not be returning to the meeting, but he, um, he said, um, good night and, um, everything's okay. But I just wanted to let you know that. Counsel Grow.
Um, only, I guess I would, I, uh, to, to, uh, C A O Cahill, I was expecting to see the, uh, um, surfing regulation, uh, document, uh, submitted to the councils and then mayor's report, uh, didn't show up tonight. So that means we're another two weeks down the road, uh, to getting this approved. So I'm, I'm hoping that we'll see it in the next mayor's report.
Um, so I've through the chair, um, I apologize, Counselor Grow. I am quite a bit under the weather and I'd expect that today. So I was not in the office, so I was not able to get that over to Joanne. And I didn't even think of it until you just said it. I apologize. That was the intention yesterday. Um, Joanne, I'll, I can work with Joanne. If there's any other way I can get it submitted or moved, um, it's ready. It's, it was literally just, I, I haven't been there today. And I apologize, Counsel Memhard worked hard on that as well.
Thank you.
Joanne, is there another method or do you want to talk offline?
Do in your, you muted.
We can talk offline.
Okay, thank you. And again, apologies. Um, we'll get that done.
Thank you. I hope you're feeling better, Jill. Um, so, let's see, we're, went to the next person. Um, are you, do you have anything? Okay, thank you. Counsel Majota.
Um, no.
Um, Counsel Memmar.
I do have one item. Um, I had a very fruitful and productive meeting with about a dozen, uh, rocky neck property owners last week who are very concerned at the outset of our summer season and the parking, parking situation and traffic on the rocky neck neighborhood. And they, I, I've sent this an email form, but I'll just use this opportunity to state again that they, they would request that, um, we clarify in, uh, this, with the clerk's office and the traffic commission, what signage and the D P W, what signage is currently on the books and in our regulations for traffic and parking in the vicinity of Rocky Neck Avenue and the corner of Horton Street and further request that a, uh, sign be installed, if it's not already permitted, um, at the intersection of Horton Street and. Sign be installed, if it's not already permitted, at the intersection of Horton Street and Rocky Neck Avenue. Where it's a dead end, ending with the railways, that all traffic is directed to turn left onto Horton Street and to not proceed. Into the dead end because it's. No parking beyond that point, residents only, and there's no opportunity for turnaround except on private property. And it's become a serious issue and a problem for property owners there from cars backing and turning and causing property damage. So I'll follow that up with a in writing, but I just take this opportunity to state that. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Next on the roll call is Counsel Nolan.
I don't have anything for the mayor tonight, but I didn't want to miss the fact that. In my opinion, one of the greatest police officers in the city of Gloucester, Officer Scott, the General Duffney. Has retired and he'll be long missed by all that served with him in the citizens of Gloucester. And I just wanted to give him a big shout out and a thank you for all his years of service. And Jill, I hope you're feeling better.
Thank you, Counselor. Counsel O'Hara.
Thank you. Just want to ask the mayor if he could help coordinate the replacement of the flag, United States flag. At Joseph Meadows Field, as it is behind the construction fencing. The flag is in need of replacement and people are concerned that it cannot. They cannot gain access for replacement. And also. Officer Duffney will be seen on the W W F channel in the future months ahead. So we all have that opportunity to see Officer Duffney in his rail, in his rail occupation that he's held. Since childhood, he's done a great job and the city will miss Officer Duffney. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. And Counsel Worthley, go ahead.
Yes, thank you. Back in January, I was planning to submit an ordinance change on the surfing regulations. And I was told that it's not a council, it's a council provision, that it's internal. D P W Parks and Recreation Regulations. And to that extent, I didn't submit anything. I understand that there's consent between the surfers and the mayor's office. And now it's coming back as a council ordinance change. And first of all, Jill, I understand that you're not feeling well. Hope you feel better soon. In a way to to hasten this, because summer's almost here. Can we get some clarity on whether it's a regulation, an internal regulation in the city, and it can be done just like that? Or if it's a city council ordinance change? And then secondarily, if it's a city council ordinance change, can we potentially have an unanimous consent where the mayor's office already worked on it?
Yeah, it's not a, I'm sorry, Madam Chair. And I apologize, no camera. You you don't want to see what I look like after daylight today. It is a policy change. It's a D P W policy change, it's beach regulations, but the council traditionally approves changes to that policy. So it's not an ordinance change. I do believe it would go to O and A, and if, I don't know your rules well enough to know if you can somehow do that. That would be fine. I know two of the counselors have, at least two, have had, have seen it, so.
Two, oh, go ahead.
Go ahead. I'd love to hear from our city clerk, who just had her hands raised, hand raised.
So it is a regulation. It would have to go to O and A, just like whatever was on the consent agenda. For the increase in fees would go to B and F. The only difference is this doesn't go to public hearing because it's a regulation. It's not an ordinance change. So once it goes to committee, then it would go into effect.
I'm wondering, just as a little bit of a shortcut, that maybe, maybe when we have. Our B and F meeting on the twenty, the twenty, what's the day of the next B and F meeting?
First, I believe, April twenty-first.
Okay, if we're meeting on April twenty-first, if we could make a referral, because we are meeting as a committee of the whole. And we'll have a quorum of the full committee, if we could put that on that agenda as a referral to O and A. Then we can shortcut. No, I guess we're not short cutting it, so we we just can't get around the fact that it wasn't on the unanimous consent agenda tonight. So we'll have, we'll have to wait, which is unfortunate, but I I I think. We'll move it as quickly as we can, once it gets placed on the next consent agenda, which will be at our next city council meeting.
It will be under committee reports, so if it's voted on April twenty-sixth, well. It's no, it'll, it probably won't go into effect until Memorial Day weekend, is that correct? When the beaches are open.
Yeah, so the change, I was gonna say, so some of the changes are two hours, but yeah, I mean, essentially, the changes don't go into effect until the beach is open. Which is Memorial Day weekend. And some of the dates extend around that, but yes, they don't enforce it until then, anyway. We get us, you know, anyway, everybody's in agreement, so I'm not concerned. If you guys could, you know, again, I apologize, this was on me, but I'm not concerned that it won't be done in time.
So I was just going to say, if you voted on April twenty-sixth. We're going to refer out to April twenty-sixth, so it'll be the first week in May. And then on May tenth, that meeting, if it's voted voted forward, then it would just go into effect to on May, on May twelfth. So it is before the beach season.
So we don't have to wait for thirty-one days for that.
It's not an ordinance, it's a regulation.
Okay, so that's.
Yeah, that's why we don't have a public hearing. It's a regulation, doesn't have to be advertised, it's just a regulation.
That's great. So we're all good. We're back on track to make this happen before Memorial Day. So thank you. I'm glad you brought that up, Counsel Worthley. So I'm the last person to speak on request, and I just have one recommendation that I'm gonna make tonight. I just want the councils to know that I'm gonna be appointing Counsel Worthley to be our legislative liaison. And let me explain to you what that is. It's it's a role where Counsel Worthley will just watch closely. What's happening at M M A in terms of legislative matters that are being escalated at the state. And keep track of those. And if he feels that there's a resolution that he wants to bring forward to council. He will put it on our agenda twice, once to refer and the second for full council vote and present that to us. His role will not lessen any of your ideas or suggestions on resolutions that you might want to bring forward. But it's just for him to really capture the essence of what M M A is is looking at supporting. And keeping an eye on the prize of things that might be beneficial for us to legislate here and to show our state. Reps and senators that our council is supporting things that might make an impact on what we do. So that's what the role is. And it's it's a work in progress. It's something that we started on the school committee when I was on the school committee. And it's a way that we can try to be more proactive with matters that are happening in the state. So I just wanted to mention that. So that's that's it. Counsel Worthley, go ahead and then we can.
Thank you for pointing me to that position. We haven't talked about this in some time, but I just want to make it clear to my colleagues. That in no case could any one of us, including me, represent the will of the council without the council vote. And so if there's ever a dialogue with state officials or legislative team. I am only one counselor and not speaking on behalf of the council unless you authorize that. So there's no circumventing of our role as individual counselors.
Exactly. That's exactly why it comes in front of us for full council vote. So and we get to see it twice when we refer it and when we're back. So anyway, it's it's a new, it's a new appointment and we'll we'll follow how it feels and how it works. And we'll modify it if we need be, but I think it's an opportunity for us to legislate and be heard. At the state level on things that are important to us. So anyway, so without further comments, it's been a long night. And appreciate the the attention from everyone and members of city staff that are here till the end. Including Attorney Basu, C A O Jill Cahill, who needs to be sleeping. And and Joanne Sinos, thank you and congratulations on your reappointment. Her job well done. Thank you. Motion to adjourn. Second by Counsel Worthley, a roll call vote, Counsel O'Neill.
Yes.
Counsel Worthley.
Yes.
Counsel Gilman, yes. Counsel Gross. Oh, I'm sorry. Counsel Grow.
Yes.
Counsel Majota.
Yes.
Counsel Memard.
Yes, and good night.
Counsel Nolan.
Yes, and have a great night.
Counsel O'Hara.
Yes.
Yes, as have it. Eight in favor, zero opposed. Good night, everybody. Thank you.